Everyone, my apologies. I'm going to have to learn to leave a little earlier to come down from Shelburne. We'll now ask staff to begin recording, and I guess they have. This meeting is being livestreamed and publicly broadcast. The recording of this meeting will also be available on our website in the future. We'll now call the meeting to order. And just a reminder of the training that we had on Monday night. Be kind tonight, especially to our treasure. I'll now read the land acknowledgement statement. We'll begin the meeting by sharing the land acknowledgement statement, respectfully acknowledging that Dufferin County resides within the traditional territory and ancestral lands of the Tiantani, Adarandran, Anishani, and the Anishnabis people. We also acknowledge that various municipalities within the county of Dufferin reside within the treaty lands named under the Haldeman deed of 1784 and two of the Williams Treaties of 1818, Treaty 18, the Narrowsaga Purchase, and Treaty 19, the Ajustus Treaty. These traditional territories upon which we live and learn are steeped in rich indigenous history and traditions. It is with this statement that we declare to honor and respect the past and present connection of indigenous peoples with this land, its waterways, and resources. I'll now ask the clerk to do a roll call, please.
Thank you. Counselor Creelman?
Present.
Counselor Gardhouse?
Present.
Counselor Garretts?
Present.
Counselor Hall?
Present.
Counselor Hawkins?
Present.
Counselor Little?
Present.
Counselor McLean?
Present.
Counselor Mills?
Present.
Counselor Nix?
Present.
Counselor Post?
Present.
Counselor Wrench?
I'm here.
Counselor Solomon?
Present.
Counselor Taylor?
Present.
Counselor White?
Present.
And Warden Horner.
Present.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda and the addendum? Moved by Mills, seconded by, oh, I don't know, Garretts. They all went up. All those in favor, carried. We'll now move on to, at this point, members of council are required to state any pecuniary interest. Please state the interest and the general nature thereof. Declarations must be verbal and in writing and can be emailed to the clerk. Yes, sir.
Anything regarding staff salaries, I declare a conflict due to a family member who works at the county.
Okay, thank you. Approval of the minutes, approval of the minutes of the election of warden meeting and regular meeting of council on December 12, 2024. Please note that the election of the warden minutes have been amended to properly reflect that Counselor Nix, as well as Counselor Solomon, voted for Counselor Little to be the chair of the Community Development and Tourism Committee. May I have a motion to adopt the minutes from the election of the warden meeting as amended and regular meeting of council on December 12, 2024? Moved by Counselor Post and seconded by Counselor Little. All those in favor, carried. We now have a proclamation or a delegation from PC McLean, Dufferin OPP, regarding the annual Polar Plunge Challenge. I'd like to invite Provincial Constable McLean from Dufferin OPP to delegate.
Excellent. First and foremost, I want to thank County Council for having me on there today. I know I signed up short notice, but I wanted to make sure that I got the information about the Polar Plunge out to the County Council and to invite the counselors that sit within the municipalities to participate within the Polar Plunge. It's not my first time coming to various councils for this, so I figured that this was the best opportunity where I can hit all the municipalities all at once, and I encourage each delegate from County Council to bring it back to their individual councils within the municipality. I know that I see a couple mayors, deputy mayors, counselors that kind of cringe as soon as they saw my name on the board. Mayor Mills being one of them and Deputy Mayor McLean. So for those that participated last year, I believe we had about six or seven different delegates from County Council, as well as, I know, Orangeville Council has some representatives. So I want to thank everybody once again for participating in this very important event. And I want to encourage those who did participate last year, whether it was donations or actually participating in the event, to come on out again this year. Just a bit of a background for those who are unaware as to what the Polar Plunge is. What it is, is it's a fundraiser that we hold across the province. I believe there was about 25 across the province last year where people jump in a body of water for Special Olympics. So they raise money. We, in Shelburne, we've held it, this will be the fifth year total between the Shelburne Police Service and the Otero Provincial Police, where we set up a pool, everybody jumps in, once the fire department fills it up, and raising a lot of money. I believe that between Shelburne and OPP, we've raised well over $100,000 for Special Olympics alone, which up until last, the three events pre-COVID, we were beating out police services that were running the event, like Toronto Police, where being Appeal Region and all that. So it's amazing for such a small community to continue to raise this amount of money. So for the Polar Plunge itself, it's a part of the larger fundraising initiative of the law enforcement torch run, which globally, it is the largest grassroots fundraiser for the Special Olympics. So what the money goes towards is it assists Special Olympians in training, it assists them in being able to participate in sport in uniforms and all that sort of stuff, and allows them to grow. It'll give them the opportunity to fit in and become champions. We have numerous athletes within the community. I want to say that the Dufferin Club alone probably consists of about 35 to 40 different athletes. In Dufferin County, we offer, I believe it's six different sports in total. So it's very important. It's, a lot of athletes do play in several different sports between summer, winter, and so forth. So it's an extremely important program that we kind of head up. This year's Polar Plunge, we have moved it just to coincide with another event that's going on. So it'll be on Family Day Monday, which is February 17, 2025. And we've moved it over to the Agricultural Barns in Shelburne. That way, we can kind of collaborate with the free family skate that happens on Family Day. And we're not splitting the community. It's walking distance basically everywhere in town, and then we can also, people can go there, they can have the free family skate, and then they can go watch, be uncomfortable by jumping in the pool, and then they can kind of go home. So this year is going to be the first year where we haven't held it at Fiddle Park. And again, it was just logistics because we realized that with the free family skate, we were literally splitting the community. So we're just trying to bring everybody together in a family-friendly atmosphere. In addition to this year, I came to County Council, I believe it was in March of 2024, where the warden at the time actually awarded what I nicknamed the Frozen Belt. So what I did is, I've gone out as a member of Dufferin OPP, and we've bought a, literally a wrestling belt that we've completely done up, specific to Dufferin County for the Polar Plunge. So what this belt is, is the highest fundraiser for the event ends up winning this belt, and they get a little replica belt that they get to keep. Last year, and I think three out of the five years that we've actually run it, a Special Olympian has won the belt each and every time. So, and I could tell you right now, I've been in contact with his father. He literally displays the belt in his room, he carries it around, he brings it to events and all that sort of stuff. So it is a moment of pride for him. So this year, we're officially announcing it, where we'll be presenting it onstage at the event to make sure that he gets the recognition that he deserves, or whoever wins it, my apologies. And at a later date, then we'll be awarding the smaller replica belt and so forth. So last year, I believe he raised over $5,000 just by himself, which is incredible. So, and especially when, on a grand scheme of things, the whole event raised just over $18,000. So this year, we're hoping to amp it up, especially by having collaboration with other Family Day events, and hopefully we can make it another great success. Last year as well, we had close to 80 plungers, so this year, obviously, we're looking for more. So again, I'd like to challenge everybody sitting at this table and to jump in again this year. If you jumped in previously, you know it's really not that bad. And we're always looking at ways to make it a little bit easier on the plungers as well. Last year, we had a wood burning sauna that was donated by Aaron Downey. This year, I'm going to reach out to Aaron to see whether or not we can have it on-site again. But just logistically, by having it at the agricultural grounds, I'm, I've asked the Shelburne Arena as well to open up their change rooms, so then that way, there's also a shower option, that if people want to change in the warm, to get showered up and all that sort of stuff, so then that way, they're not cold throughout the whole day. So we're just looking at different amenities and so forth to kind of expand on it. And if anybody at the table has any suggestions, I'd be more than willing to hear about it. I believe the clerk has my email address. Feel free to shoot me off a message. And so again, I want to challenge everybody at the table, everybody that sits on the municipalities. And I can send out flyers and all that sort of stuff to everybody at the table, so then that way, they can kind of broadcast it out to their different delegates. The website to sign up is polarplunge.ca/dufferin. And within that website as well, you can either register or you can donate. So I would highly encourage people to register either as a team or as an individual. You can be a team of one. So if you decide that you're going to go with a certain theme, because we do do a bit of a costume contest, both individual and team. So if you decide that you want to register as a member of a team, and your team's only one, but you're going with a theme, by all means, we encourage it. So again, I want to thank County Council for inviting me out here today, and if there's any questions, by all means, I'd be more than willing to answer.
Thank you, Constable. Any volunteers for the Dufferin County team today? They all look a little warm to me, but thank you for your presentation, and I know you'll see some of us there.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Darren says he's still cold from last year. Okay, is there anyone in the public gallery that has a question? If you do, please stand, state your name and your address. Were there any questions? Here. Yes.
I'm standing.
You can stand here.
Okay, anyway, my name is Nick Kigeristo. I live on 20th Polacourt, L 9W 5V1. Okay, the question I have today, and I spoke to a lot of residents from the town of Orangeville. Unfortunately, the town of Orangeville passed a budget with a 5% increase, just a penny less, but I say 5% increase. A lot of people, they're not very happy with that. Here, we're standing here tonight, so you have your work cut out, because you're also looking at 5.6% increase. So I hope this body here tonight will do their best to lower the budget. I know I sat around this table for two years as a deputy mayor. It's not an easy task, but it can be done if you put your mind to it to get, bring it down to zero. So I live with that, because a lot of people, I can tell you, in the town of Orangeville, they're not very happy. Thank you.
Yes. Who are they, Nick? I've heard from anybody that's not happy with the budget.
Well, I can tell you, you know, you know what kind of work I do.
Not, not one person has gotten in touch with council about that.
I'm a hairstylist by trade.
I don't, I don't believe you.
Well, you don't believe in me? Why, why you don't believe in me?
Because no one has complained about it. You're making general statements.
Were you in the place when they told me?
Sorry, folks, this is in Orangeville.
Exactly.
This is an Orangeville discussion, and I think-
What I brought to the attention of this body here today, because you're also looking at 5.6% increase.
Yes.
So that's what I'm looking.
Yes.
And if you stick with the number, you know what that means for the town of Orangeville? Let's say you stick with the same numbers. That means Orangeville is going to get hit with over a 7% increase. That's a hollow way to show. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Warden. My name's David Waugh. I'm at Two Amanda in Orangeville. My question is kind of similar, but I think, sorry, Mike, not being heard. Similar, I would say you guys did a great job on the budget, really bringing it down, being incredibly responsible in investing in what we have been underinvesting in in the past. And my question, I think, is more direct at the rest of the room. Some of you I've met, some of you I've not. But I think really the challenge that all of us are in, but Orangeville more acutely, from my personal perspective, relates to more of a structural funding model challenge, right? So I don't know if you're comfortable doing this now, or if you would be willing to state this later during the discussion, but I would like to know how many of you, or individually, acknowledge that there's a funding model problem that needs to be fixed, right? And then if you will acknowledge that, proceed with the discussion and fix it, right? But I think it's going to be challenging for all of you to have a meaningful discussion, debate, and make some decisions, when I think there's, from my perspective and watching a lot of these meetings online, kind of a convenient denial that the challenge even exists in some cases, and I think it's, you've got to call it out so that we can fix it. So whether you want to do that now or later, I leave that to you, but I think that personally, I think is the problem that needs to be fixed, and I look forward to you doing that. And I thank you all for your service. I know it's a big job, and I would appreciate your support.
Counselor Garretts.
I just wanted to add that, so I'm, Chris Garretts, from Township of Amaranth, and our deputy mayor, Gail Little, is here. We have a delegation with the Minister of Finance, sorry, it's the Parliamentary Assistant at Roma in a week and a half, and the exact topic is the problem with the funding model. So I think it's fair to say, and, you know, that, that Amaranth, for one, recognizes that there's, that there's an issue, an inequity issue, and I'm, I'm confident in saying that, yeah, that's Amaranth's position. So, thank you.
McLean?
Yeah, thanks for coming in. Thanks for the question. I just wanted to be clear on, like, what aspect of the funding model do you have concerns with?
Right, I think this would be predominantly related to the capital investment component of facilities, right? So I'm speaking to, you know, libraries in some cases, also the community centers like at Alder, the rec center, you know, there are others. I mean, right now, obviously, Tony Rose is a whole other kettle of fish that's going to be a big challenge. So I do acknowledge certainly that there are contributions from an operating fees perspective, and in some cases, you know, higher than what Orangeville residents would necessarily contribute from an operating funding perspective, but the capital investment and also the corresponding costs either from a legal perspective or, you know, everything else that comes with it. I have to imagine there's been some legal costs over at Alder recently. You know, that, that's significant, and I'm not sure that's been captured sufficiently. Again, you guys would probably know better than me, and I'm sure some of the other colleagues here would know even better than that, but, you know, when you look at the tax rates across municipalities and where, where the costs sit versus where the people are versus where the land is, and who has the capacity to grow from a tax-based perspective, you know, Orangeville's got pinched from a, from a landmass perspective and capacity, yet has the lion's share of both the operating costs and more significantly and acutely the, the capital investment needs without the corresponding sufficient ability to find the funds, right? And, you know, I think it would be a bit extreme to, you know, make the analogy that it's a bit like Canada and the States and the conversation that Trump's having right now, but there's a bit of a free rider effect, I think, that, you know, some people could, you know, run the risk of having that feeling, and I don't think that's good for the community when, you know, that sort of us versus them feeling and sentiment and resentment can, has the capacity or the opportunity to start to faster, right? I think we've got an opportunity now to nip it, and I challenge you to do it, and I know you will do your best, and I hope you do.
Thank you.
Counselor Nix?
Yeah, I'm sorry to be a bit dense. I'm still not quite clear on the problem you're identifying. Is it the share of taxes being paid by municipalities versus the province? Or is it the share of taxes being paid by Orangeville versus the other municipalities in Dufferin County? I'm not quite sure I understand your point.
I mean, respectfully, Counselor Nix, if you're not sure of the problem, then that's, that in itself is part of the problem. It should be self-evident. I don't mean to be disrespectful, but it should be clear.
I'm not clear, I'm not clear of what problem you're talking about.
Okay, I'm sure it'll open the conversation.
Well, can't you just tell me?
Sure, I mean, sure, I mean, I just, I want to be respectful of your time. I think I'm probably already over, but it, it would be the portion, like, Orangeville has operating and capital costs related to its facilities, right? Whether it's-
Every municipality does.
Not every municipality here has libraries, not every municipality here has rec centers, not every municipality here has other, you know, I could go on, right?
We, I've come from the town of Mono.
Sure.
We pay for library services to Orangeville.
Right, which is what I was-
We pay a higher fee for going to the swimming pool than Orangeville residents.
Yep, I spoke to that before, and that's where I openly acknowledge that you do contribute to the operating cost component, which would be the staff in the building, the heat, the hydro, everything else.
So put it in plain English, what you're saying is, the surrounding municipalities don't pay enough, is that what you're trying to say?
I'm saying that when Tony Rose needs to be fixed, knocked down, replaced, whatever, yes, the, the cost to build the new facility, whatever size, shape, or form it takes, somebody's got to build the building before you can contribute your component of the operating expenses, right? There's got to be a building and a service there to begin with, right? And that's where Orangeville has paid more than their fair share for an awful long time.
So you are saying that the surrounding municipalities are not paying enough? Okay, now I understand you now.
Yes.
Frank?
Thank you. Counselor White?
Thank you, Warden. So essentially, there's two components to your, your argument, one that I don't think you're aware of, and one that clearly you are aware of. The first one that I'll talk about is, there is a problem with the funding model at the upper levels of government and how they support or don't support municipalities, and the fact that municipalities have to do 90% of the work on 10% of the money. There is advocacy and discussion going on in all of our municipal organizations, Roma, Western Wardens, AMO, all of those groups are, are having those discussions on what a better funding model looks like. So some of that, if that ever realizes any benefit, some of that will be addressed in that. But, you know, with regards to your other point, every municipality here pays for libraries. It's just how do we do it? In Melanthon, we pay into the Shelburne Public Library. We do that with a, both a, an operating contribution and a capital contribution based on budgets that are set by that library. I would assume that there's, every different library has some kind of agreement like that. So- Yeah. Sure. Yeah, that, that's fair. So, I mean, but with regards to recreation centers, fire departments, all those things, they're all the same. From time to time, those agreements are modified or exchanged, or right now, we're looking at fire and how that works going forward. If a time comes when we're going to discuss libraries and whatnot, or recreation or whatnot, I mean, those times will come, those, that, those discussions will be had. I think everybody around here at this table, staff included, all want to see a better, vibrant, thriving community, and, you know, but we can't do everything all the time at the same time. So it's an evolving conversation, and I think everybody supports having that conversation.
Last word.
Just wanted to, just wanted to add, similar to Counselor White, Amaranth pays operating in capital to Grand Valley and Shelburne Rec Centers, Grand Valley and Shelburne Libraries. The reason we don't to Orangeville is because some time ago, a, a previous council, we're going back decades, had us removed from those arrangements. So as a result, Amaranth now is obligated to pay $0 to the library, and is obligated to pay $0 to your, to the rec center for Orangeville. That was not our decision, that was the town of Orangeville's decision at the time. So just wanted to clarify that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on, and it's great to have some public involvement, really. There's lots of days we go by here, and there's nobody from the public, and you wonder, does anybody care? But yes, people do care. So thank you for, for your questions. Number nine is a selection committee for the Homelessness Task Force. The report from the clerk dated January 9. So are we needing any further discussion on this? What we're asking for are at least two individuals to be appointed to the selection process. Do we, sorry.
I'd like to, with your permission, nominate Counselor Post for one of the positions.
Counselor Post, are you willing to stand?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Counselor Garretts.
And is there anyone else that's interested?
I think it would be appropriate for Counselor McLean as the new Chair of Health and Human Services, so if he's willing, I would love to nominate Counselor McLean to join me.
Are you willing to stand, Counselor McLean?
I am. Thanks, Counselor Post.
Any further interest, or is that, that everybody that's interested? Okay, so the motion reads, I need a mover and a seconder then. Moved by Counselor Garrett, seconded by Counselor Hall, that the report from the clerk, CAO 01 2025, Selection Committee Homelessness Task Force stated January 9 to be received, and the selection process outlined in the report be approved, and that Counselors Post and McLean be appointed to sit on the Homelessness Task Force. All those in favor? Carried. Okay, the next item is 9.2, the CAO Evaluation Committee. Again, the report from the CAO dated January 9. We have a motion that the report be received, and we need some volunteers for the Evaluation Committee. Is anyone interested in sitting on this committee?
Warden, Warden Horner, I'd be interested in joining you on that committee.
Okay, Counselor Post, you're going to be busy. Counselor Mills?
I'd be happy to join both of you.
Okay, and we need one more. I don't know who to pick first. Let's, Counselor Little, your hand, I think I saw first.
Thank you, yes. I would be honored to be a part of that committee as well, but, you know, if, if-
We have Counselor Nix as well, so we have everybody on this committee. We actually should just have four. So will we need a, an election, or what do we do?
I'm, I'm quite happy if Counselor Little wants to do it.
I will be sure to consult with Counselor Nix as well.
That's probably a good thing, Counselor Little. Okay, so, did we get a mover and a seconder? Okay, so I need a mover and a seconder for this, McLean and Creelman, that the report from the Chief Administrative Office, Report CAO 2025-02, CAO Evaluation Committee 2025, dated January 9, 2025, be received, and that the following members be appointed to the CAO Evaluation Committee for 2025, Warden Horner, Counselor Post, Counselor Mills, and Counselor Little. All those in favor? That one's carried. Okay. The next exciting item is the budget. And I know you're all just sitting on the edges of your seats. I know we have appreciated the, the questions that have occurred before the, the budget process, so that you can get some clarity on what you read, and, you know, sometimes it's not easy to just figure out the numbers and, and the intent. So the questions were welcome, and we appreciate those questions ahead of time. So Amy, I'm going to turn this over to you, and you can walk us through this actually excellent document. Thank you.
I'm just going to say one thing, if that's okay, Warden Horner, and that is just from a logistical perspective, we thought in between each of the committee presentations, we would take a five-minute break, and either after the Infrastructure, Environment, or Services presentation, or after the GGS presentation, we'll take a longer 20 to 25-minute dinner break. So if that works for everyone, just so we all are clear on what's happening, and now it's all over to Amy.
Just a second. Amy, before we begin, are you wanting questions as you're presenting, or do you want us to wait until the end of each section?
I actually cover that in the overview section. Once I read through the overview section, I will let you know, but pretty much as you go through.
Keep us in.
Yeah. Okay, so Sonya and I are kind of working together here. She's going to run the presentation. Just waiting for it to come up on the screen.
Just waiting for it to come up on the screen. Okay, so I'm gonna start with a condensed version of the budget overview that we had in, uh, December, before we move into the committees. And I'll warn you, I have added a couple of slides to the overview section that weren't included in your package. So this chart summarizes the 2024, next slide, Sonya, 2024 and 2025 budget, as well as our plan for 2026, 2027, and 2028. Next slide. Although most of the slides today will include the 2026 to 2028 plan, we will be focusing on 2024 and 2025. At a high level, this chart shows that our 2025 total operating expenses are 161, including capital, uh, work. Is 161 million a significant jump over 2024, mainly due to the larger capital projects? Non-tax, tax revenue is $98 million, which includes $22 million in debt to fund the capital projects. Lastly, we plan on using nearly $14 million in reserves and development charges, with over $10 million going towards capital. This is what we call the status quo budget. It represents the cost to continue doing exactly what we do. Uh, and it requires over $48.9 million in tax levy, which is an increase of one and a half million, or 3.2% over 2024. I think you skipped ahead, Sonya. Currently proposed, uh, we have $1.8 million in additions to the status quo budget. These include new positions with a value of $413,000, previously committed at $295,000, and new to 2025, things we haven't seen before of $1.1 million. Combine the status quo, the, the status quo results in a 7.08% increase? Sorry, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the screen, I'm seeing 5.5 because I'm looking at the far side. And when we take into consideration growth, we, we leave, leaves us at 5.6%, which is approximately $22.40 for each $100,000 of assessment. Although the focus today is 2025, I would be remiss if I didn't, if I didn't point out that 2026, 2027, and 2028 show some significant increases. These include the full year impact of items proposed in 2025, such as the paramedic addition, uh, and new staff. They also include future debt payments. For proposed borrowing, we will need to do renovations to this building, as well as the new operation center, and increased contribution to the housing strategy. As always, the future years are estimates and are subject to change, but these are our current projections. Now, I'm just gonna summarize some of the, uh, priorities that we have, some major initiatives and projects to support the strategic plan. Within climate and environment, we have the Better Home Retrofit Program, Climate Master Plan, the County Buildings Energy Retrofit Study, that I'm just gonna put an asterisk on that, we'll come back to that later, electric vehicle charging station for county fleet, long-term waste management strategy update and audits. Within the community priority, we have housing strategy implementation, upgrades and capital maintenance on the housing stock, paramedic services master plan, additional paramedic shift in Shelburne. Under economy, we have advancing the workforce strategy for early, early childhood educators, county-wide community improvement plan, investment attraction program, tourist development. In governance, we plan to review the committee meeting structure, progress on the new operation center, Adalbrock Center improvements, completing the digital modernization projects, and fundraising and sponsorship plan for the Museum of Duffrn. And then lastly, with equity, getting implementation of the older adult strategy, transit improvements, county-wide community improvement plan, investment attraction program, tourist development, indigenous education training. So we have a lot of different projects that we've kind of, um, that we have on the go. And I just wanted to throw in a summary of the proposed additions by category. So the bottom there adds up to $1.9 million, which includes the capital, uh, new capital. So the total revenues are, are $2.3 million, expenses are 4.9, with transfers, net transfers, um, of $710,000, and then capital investment is $118,000. And I just want to note that that's the net capital investment of, uh, new, new staff. That's being funded by a tax levy. Okay. Some other considerations today. If you're looking to reduce the tax levy, um, there's really only a few ways you can do that. One is to increase revenues, which is very difficult in municipal government. Second, we can look at decreasing expenses, but that too can be difficult, um, and have future year impacts. You can certainly postpone or remove specific projects for, uh, for future years. Or you can consider changing service levels, but often such changes do take time and will not impact the current year very much, if at all. These are typically more longer-term strategies. We can create a list of these items for future discussion today if we want to. You can also reduce the contribution to capital. This doesn't necessarily mean the removal of items from the work plan, because generally that work still needs to be done, and we've been raising money for it over the years. It would impact future, uh, work plans, though. Lastly, you can also apply more reserves. I just wanted to note that 1% of tax levy is approximately $475,000. For each committee, we will review the departments which it covers, and then within, for each division within the department, we will split out revenues, expenses, expenses, transfers from reserves, providing highlights. We will, where appropriate, we will also highlight any proposed additions before moving to, moving on to capital for that division. If at any time you do have questions, or you would like to discuss a particular item, please let me know. I will do my best to pause, but I do have a tendency just to keep going because there's lots to say. So feel free to interrupt me. And the other thing I wanted to note, um, Sonya, can you go back a couple? Okay, or open up the other one. Just in the upper right-hand corner of the slide, it does reference the page number within the package, where there's more detail, if you do want to go and look at that. So now we're gonna move on to IES. Okay, infrastructure and environment. This committee only includes public works. At the beginning of each department, can slide down a couple slides, sorry. Um, I provide a summary showing the status quo of each division. So within public works, we have operations and fleet, engineering, climate energy, facilities, waste services, and county forest. They have a proposed 4.6% overall increase. And then the next slide shows the totals for each division. Next slide. Um, including any proposed additions. So for public works, that's 6.9%. This capital, um, chart summarizes the capital for the department, showing the value of the proposed work in purple, the value of the capital asset fund in orange, and the required levy in blue. I like this chart because it provides a nice summary of the capital overall, over 20 years, and it reminds us that we do look at the 20-year plan when we're coming up with the levy requirements. Uh, this includes roads and structures, as well as Adalbrock Center, the courthouse, waste services, and operations, and county forest. I want to note that this is based on the information that we had at the time, recognizing that the roads and structures will change as we finalize our updated capital plan in support of the implementation of the road rationalization study. Okay, let's move into the individual divisions. Operations and fleet. Okay. Revenues are, are down 52%, are $164,000. Government transfers includes an increase in winter maintenance revenues to better reflect actual of $10,000. And other revenue is a reduction in staff and equipment time. Essentially, that's our time spent on capital projects. Expenses, the total increase here is 1.86%, or $115,000. Public, uh, operations and fleet has 21 full-time positions and 14 part-time winter seasonal positions. Staffing is not really down in 2024, or in 2025, it looks like it, because 2024, we did include an extra amount for the overlap of the operations manager position. Additional highlights under admin and office, consulting fees include road safety reviews, audits for $20,000. Increase in training to support ongoing, ongoing learning of staff of $18,850. We've added more staff over the last few years, and, and the training budget didn't reflect quite enough. Within service delivery, we have service and rental contracts, as well as materials for bridges and culverts of $99,000. Roadside maintenance of 79, hard top and loose top maintenance of $226,000, safety systems of just over $680,000, which includes lime painting, hydro for lights, guide rail repair, and winter control. Go to the next slide if you like. And of $1.1 million. And then IT communications, we shifted the annual fee from municipal 501 permit software from service delivery to software fees, so it's not really an increase there. Any questions?
Seeing none.
Okay. Moving on to transfers, um, 2024, we included that manager overlap, which is why there's no, we had that coming from reserves. And then the $775,000 is a transfer to capital for future equipment replacement. Moving on to proposed additions, the net for 2025 for operations and fleet is $49,000. 2026, 2027, and 2028 see some large increases as, uh, these relate to the new operation center. Next slide. Previously committed, the thermal road network mapping involves using temperature data from sensors and satellite imagery to access road conditions, which we, which will identify hot or cold spots in the road network, resulting in the ability to optimize infrastructure management for safety and efficiency. And that is estimated $35,000, and is to be funded by the rate stabilization plan, reserve. Fleet booking software, it enables users to reserve, manage, and track vehicles in a shared fleet, streamlining, vehicle access, and optimizing fleet utilization. Annual fees are $10,000. Uh, we purchased this software, I think in 2024, using a grant. And then the road safety management soft, software enables data-driven decisions-making, uh, decision-making helps to reduce future collisions and promotes public safety through efficient traffic management and policy enforcement. Implementation costs and annual fees are estimated 20 grand. Any question on those?
Counselor Nix?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm having trouble keeping track of where I am, but I know you've got in your budget, you're gonna borrow some money for the Southern Operations Center, I think about 20, 20 million dollars. I was curious, and I, I know that's just a plan now, you haven't borrowed it, but I'm curious, um, do you go to Infrastructure Ontario for that money? And do you have any sense of what, uh, interest you, they, they would charge you now? And what type of loan is it? Is it like a, a mortgage loan, where you pay back a fixed amount per month capital and interest over a certain number of years? Do you, do you have any details on how that loan works? And if that's maybe not, maybe it's premature to be asking this, I'm sort of curious, because we sometimes have considered in the town of Monau, whether or not we could borrow money. And I'd, I'd be interested in, as to how it works with Infrastructure Ontario.
Through you, Warden. I did look into it in the fall, and the rate at that point, I think, was four and a quarter. I would assume that the rate has come down since then. Um, there's options, you can borrow so that you're only paying semi-annually, or you can pay quarterly, or you can pay monthly. My recommendation would be monthly, because the interest cost will be lower over the long run. Um, when we do move to, when we make the final decision to borrow, then I will come to council, and we'll have a further discussion on what those options are and what the best route is. Okay? Okay, uh, new to 2025, we include a guide rail inspection study, which will be used to ensure the safety barriers are properly maintained, identify areas in need of repair or improvement, and prioritize resources to mitigate risks and protect road users. Uh, $60,000, this also will be funded from the rate stabilization reserve. Road patrol software is necessary for summer and winter patrolling, as it helps track and manage maintenance activities, ensuring timely responses to weather-related road conditions, optimizing resource allocation for safety, and enabling compliance with minimum maintenance standards, and with an annual fee of $18,500. Any question on those?
Counselor McLean?
Uh, yeah, I was just curious, what is the road safety management software? Like, what is that intended to do?
Through you, Warden. Um, so that's the software that we talked about the last council meeting, um, where basically what it allows us to do is to provide several inputs, as well as geometry of an intersection, and it can run through very quickly different modeling for different approaches, different improvements or changes to an intersection, for example, so that we can come up very quickly. You know, we, we talk often around this table about whether an all-way stop is appropriate, additional lanes, um, those types of things, and it just helps us do that much more quickly, because we certainly are seeing, um, road safety is a priority for us, seems to be a priority for council, and it's a challenge to respond as quickly as we would like to, and this will allow us to do so.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that. In my head, for some reason, I was thinking it was about tracking incidents or issues, but I remember the conversation. Thank you.
But to, to that point, it actually gives us direct connection to the province for collision data, which currently takes a very long time to obtain, and now we have real-time connection.
Okay. Thank you.
Understand. Philip, you have a question?
Thank you. Thank you. I do, it's about the guide rail inspection. Um, is this generally not guide rails that are part of bridge structures? Because I'm under the understanding that's usually done through the OSEM study. So is this, are these other guide rails?
Through you, Warden. So typically, or generally, yes. Um, the answer would be yes. So right now, in order to build our capital plan in a, in a structured way, that's not only considering condition and improvements, but also upgrades. Um, so we do that for roads, we do that for bridges, we do not do that for guide rail. We typically respond when there's damage. Um, I've spoken with several members around this table over the years, where the standards for guide rail have changed, and we have no plan to respond to it. Simply, we try to maintain what's in place for as long as possible, um, until it can't be anymore. And at that point, we may upgrade to a, a steel post and, and cable and those types of systems that I think some of you have seen around the county. So this will give us a similar sort of capital plan for how to actually handle it in a, in a more proactive manner, instead of us simply responding to damage.
Anyone else? Seeing none? Carry on, Amy.
Okay, shifting to capital, we will be drawing down on the capital asset fund, uh, for operations and fleet over the next few years on the bottom line. Next slide. The, there's a prior carry forward. Um, essentially, this is kind of the difference between where we thought we were gonna be at the end of 2024, and where we actually may end up, because it was still an estimate when we calculated the numbers. But the $1 million is made up of, uh, we have a sign maker of $10,000 that we're, we didn't do in 2024, we're carrying in 2025. Guide rails of $75,000, interior renovations of 50, uh, transformer and electrical work of $450,000, a rooftop unit of $15,000, carbon monoxide detector of 10, trails of 25, two pickups of 120, engineering equipment of 49, and then welcome signs of 200,000. And then that equals about $1,000, and the difference is just some surpluses from completed projects. There's a slight decrease, next slide, in the capital levy over 2024, before it starts, um, increasing. And other revenue includes, um, yeah, other revenue includes $150,000 for the sale of older equipment, as well as the $725,000 thousand dollars we saw being transferred from operating. Next. Debt financing is by far the largest number we will see in contributions. The amounts in twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six relate to the new operations center and a new sand salt dome and primrose. It should be noted that the future debenture cost for the building will be offset by development charges, and we will also certainly be seeking any grants that we can apply to bring down the amount that we have to borrow. Moving on to the capital work plan. The capital work plan includes over twenty-four million dollars worth of work for twenty twenty-five, with three and a half million in regular work and over twenty million dollars we will consider in new capital investments. Some of the highlights of the different categories, next slide. Under land improvements, we have ongoing replacement of guide rails and intersection lighting of one hundred and fifty grand. Next one. And the county welcome signs, it's a one million dollar project that we're spreading over five years. Buildings, we have extensive electrical work to allow future charging of electric vehicles of six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We have interior upgrades, including updates to the kitchen, washrooms and storage space of one hundred and seventy. Design work for replacement of the sand salt domes of eight hundred thousand dollars.
Just on the welcome signs. Just on the welcome signs. Did we not go through a process of deferment signage in recent memory?
Scott, I think we're going to look at you on this one.
Through you, Warden. Absolutely. So that was facilitated through the economic development team, and we started to install signs around the county, and then there was a slight pause due to some unforeseen circumstances, and we're simply picking it up again. So there's several locations where we haven't installed the signs that council ultimately supported at that point in time.
Moving on to equipment and machinery, we have GPS and data collector to be replaced for forty-nine thousand dollars, which was carried over from twenty twenty-four, and replacement of a loader for four hundred thousand. You might have noticed in your slide deck, the vehicle section, I seem to have missed that. Apologies on that. We do have purchasing two snow plows at four hundred and forty thousand dollars each. We have one patrol truck and two engineering trucks. One of the engineering trucks is being carried over from twenty twenty-four, it's already been ordered, we just haven't received it yet. And then the new capital investments, of course, is the purchase of land and construction of the new Southern Operations Center. Costs are estimated.
Amy, just hang on, there's a question.
The vehicle one, that's one of the questions I had asked, and I did get confirmation, just want to point out, those are all replacements, there's no increase in any fleets at all.
No.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Sorry, the costs on the new operations center, as we will probably reiterate, is their estimates only and will be further refined as we move into that project. Okay, summarizing operations and fleet. The status quo budget is five point three percent. When you add in capital, that becomes four point eight, which you won't actually see on any of these charts because I just didn't have time to switch them around so that you could see it. But with proposed additions, the total increase is five point five five percent. Any other questions or anything for operations and fleet?
None.
Moving on to engineering. Other revenue, revenues are down twenty-one thousand dollars or four point seven one percent. It includes, this is essentially a transfer of capital, transfer to capital of staff time spent on capital projects. We've reduced it to better reflect what's actually been occurring. Other revenue also includes load permits of fifty thousand dollars and aggregate royalty revenue of about eighty grand. Next slide. Engineering is one of the few divisions where the expenditures are actually going down, three point nine five percent. The salaries and benefits include five full-time positions and two summer students, and the larger increase than regular is because they did add a position in twenty twenty-four, and this is the full-year impact of it. Other highlights include within admin and office. Oh.
Sorry. Counselor next.
Yeah, I may just be jumping ahead to the next slide, but one of the things you've got down for this is the road rationalization study, and I just, I had, I thought we'd finished that, Scott. Is there more work to be done on that study? I thought we, oh, we finished it, but we approved it.
Through you, Warden. So yes, the study is complete, it was adopted by council. Staff were left to update the numbers, which is what our treasurer noted earlier, that we have yet to update our ten-year capital plan because we want to have current numbers. And there's also some funds being carried for setting up any agreements that are necessary with any of the local tier municipalities where we need to have them in place.
The total we have set aside is sixty-five thousand dollars, which includes the legal fees, as Scott had said. Also in admin and office is seventy-five thousand dollar carryover for the climate risk assessment, which started at the end of last year. Vehicles and equipment will see a slight decrease as we transition to electric vehicles. Next slide. Yeah, did that one. Oh, go back. Transfers, thank you. There's less reliance on reserves in twenty twenty-five, which makes sense with the admin and office expenses that dropped from twenty twenty-four. We are using transfer from rate stabilization to offset the cost of the road rationalization study and the climate risk assessment. Proposed additions, the net for twenty twenty-five is only sixteen thousand dollars, which solely increases in coming years. Next slide. So I do have in my notes the entire kind of summary that is in the package for each of the different positions. I'm happy to read that over again, or if everybody's okay, I can just skip it and get to the financial details. Okay?
I think they're okay.
Okay. So the additional cost for this position to start in March of twenty twenty-five is ninety-eight thousand dollars for salaries and benefits, with an additional fourteen thousand dollars in support costs for year one, and then eleven thousand year after. The annualized cost of the position is one hundred and nineteen thousand five hundred ten dollars, and the cost is offset by new fees for application revenue estimated a hundred thousand dollars shown there under new to twenty twenty-five. Within the previously committed, we have, as part of the ongoing digital modernization project, new asset and maintenance management software programs will be implemented in twenty twenty-five to allow for better data management and reporting. The annual fees are for part of the year only, it will be offset by reserves over several years as we phase in the cost, the impact on the levy. The total annual fees are approximately one hundred and twenty thousand dollars with a net cost of twenty twenty-five of thirteen thousand three hundred and sixty to engineering. I have exactly the same notes for both courthouse, for facilities, because facilities is sharing this, and then also under finance, because we're using it, so we're splitting the cost forty, forty, twenty percent. Under new to twenty twenty-five is the planning and revenue fees that are anticipated through updates of the bylaw fee. The intention is that the revenue will offset that new position related to the application review. And then the second phase of the climate risk assessment we have in there to be funded from rate stabilization. Any questions on the new items in engineering?
Counselor Taylor.
Through you, Warden. I just think it'd be a good idea if we quickly talked again about this position in particular, and if Mr. Burns could just chat again about what and why, and it's important because this is a big part of the budget, and I'd like to talk about each of them as we go through today.
Through you, Warden. So this one's pretty straightforward. You've heard us talk over the years how development is increasing and we have to perform development review, and it's something that generally is done by the engineering team somewhat side of desk. We do have one person who is dedicated to that, and the manager also spends an extreme amount of time working on it as well. And simply put, with the resources we have, we cannot deliver within a reasonable timeframe a quality set of comments. So we put some work into looking at what we would need, which would be this individual, this position being filled, and put a fair bit of work, the team did a lot of work in the fees bylaw to ensure that we're capturing fees that previously were not included, and the hundred thousand dollars that's included in the budget as revenue is a conservative number. Our estimates go as high as one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, somewhere in that ballpark, depending on the amount of development that we're seeing. So we do expect this position to essentially be paid for through the work that it's doing, and also providing a better service with respect to turnaround, because one of the delays, certainly, I've said this before and not ashamed to state it, that we become part of the delay in that overall development application process for folks, and we want to provide a better service.
Just a question, Scott. The person who would fill this job has what kind of skills or background?
Through you, Warden. They would very likely be a certified engineering technologist or an engineer who has background potentially in urban design and maybe development, construction, those types of things, so they'd be very well-versed in the science behind development, as well as the actual inner workings of construction and those types of things. So similar skill sets to what we have in-house, we just don't have frankly enough of it.
Okay.
Anything further, Todd?
I'm just thinking again, while we're all here, whenever we go through the salary piece, you know, it's such a personal thing, but at the same time, when I think about what you just described as who's qualified, and then the difficulties we've had getting people, again, I always question, are we going to get somebody? Because it feels like we're low.
We shall see. We're hopeful. I mean, we put a lot of energy into reviewing what compensation should be and the total compensation package that the county can provide, and I think it's fair to say, I'm looking at Director Thompson, that it's fair to say that we are much more competitive than we once were, and therefore we are hopeful, yes.
Yes, Rohan.
If I can just add through you, Warden, I just want to remind folks that from a wage perspective, all of our positions go through a formal job evaluation process, and through that job evaluation process, it gets graded, and then there's a wage that's attached to it, so it's not really up to department heads to determine salary, we do have a formalized process for that.
Anything further? Yes, Todd.
Ever so quickly, what will we do if we determine that we're low in the marketplace? Do we have another fund, or how do we go about that? What do we do?
Rohan, do you want to answer that?
So, great question through you, Chair. So there's a couple of options for us to take a look at. One would be a review and revision of the actual job, the job description, to see if whether or not all the required skills, qualifications, all that sort of stuff really match what we're requiring. So that's one thing for us to look at. The other thing, I think more broadly, for the county to take a look at, council to take a look at, is sort of the challenge that we're up against in terms of competition, right, for talent. And so folks will recall that when we did our last wage market review, council approved that against our comparators to come in at the fifty-fifth percentile, and I understand that that historically was above what the county normally did, I believe it came in normally at the fiftieth percentile. And so in this budget package proposal this year, folks will note that there is monies in the budget to conduct another wage market review this year. We had agreed to do that on a four-year period, but council, at that point in time, will have the opportunity to decide if whether or not we want to continue at the fifty-fifth percentile, or if council would like to increase that percentile to help make the county be a little bit more competitive from a total compensation perspective in the recruitment and talent piece.
Counselor McLean.
Thanks for that answer. You may have addressed my question, I'm just going to ask it anyway, just in case. So a lot of employers will have pay bands, right, with a minimal salary and an upper salary, and then there's room for the department to negotiate in between. The figure, so this is a general question, but I just want to use the development reviewer as an example. So the hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and eighty, first of all, is that the approach that we take? And if it is, where would the hundred and twelve fall? Because I'm wondering, in order to give the department some flexibility to hire at a competitive rate, should we not be budgeting for the upper level of that pay band to give the director the opportunity to increase based on negotiations? If that's not how we do it here, that's fine, I'm just trying to wrap my head around process.
I can actually answer that question. We budget at the middle of the grade because that typically ends, it's a guess, right? Sometimes the people come in lower, some people come in higher, so when we budget, we budget at the middle, and then in the next year, we adjust, depending on where they land.
Counselor next.
Yeah, I appreciated Counselor Taylor's questions, but I thought I heard at the beginning that he declared a conflict of interest if any subject of salaries comes up. Didn't, isn't that what you said, Todd? Or maybe I misheard, but I thought I heard him say he had a conflict of interest.
I thank you for bringing that forward. I do have a conflict of interest, however, I think over certain positions, it's my right as a counselor to ask questions about hiring, so I will do so. If you'd like to file something, you're welcome to do so.
I just, I misheard.
When there's a vote, I will not be voting on salary increases.
Sonya, can you give us some clarity just on this, so we're clear as to whether this is an issue at this moment? Conflict of interest.
In fairness, Madam Warden, I don't think that's a fair question to ask.
Warden, I think it's up to me, and if people in the room disagree with the way I'm conducting myself, they can, they'd have to file with the integrity commissioner, but my intention is to continue to ask questions and participate in it, and when there's a vote.
You'll not be participating in a vote?
When there's a vote, I will not be voting.
Okay. Can we keep going then? Any more questions on this person?
Just a quick question on what the annualized salary is, because there's two different numbers. The one on the slide deck is one twelve, and the one in the budget documents is one nineteen. Is the one nineteen the accurate figure?
The one twelve on the slide deck is the cost for twenty twenty-five, and the one nineteen is the annualized cost. So twenty twenty-five is only, the one twelve is for March to December.
Okay, understood, thank you.
What else? No, go ahead then, Amy.
Okay, so no other questions on the proposed additions, so we can move on to capital. Similar to other divisions, we see a value of the capital asset fund decrease over the next few years before it starts to increase again. Next slide. The prior year carry forward includes three hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a culvert that we shifted into a future year, some pavement preservation work and design work for future structural replacement in roads, and the balance is savings from twenty twenty-four projects. Moving on to capital contributions, engineering is one of the very few divisions that have dedicated government transfers for capital. We have included Canada Community Building Fund of two million one hundred sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, and the Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund, sorry, seven hundred and thirty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. We were actually expecting a decrease in the OCIF, and we did get an increase, and we included that in the budget. Other contributions. Nope, too far. Nope, go back up, one more. It's touchy. Other revenue includes contributions from developers for second line and deferment road one oh nine realignment. 109 realignment. We have transfers from rates stabilization reserve included for the environmental assessment of Duffin Road 109. And lastly, we have some development charges for Duffin Road 25. Moving on to capital work, we have $11.1 million planned work for engineering. Next slide. This includes a carryover in the environmental assessment for Duffin Road 109 of 600,000, which is to be funded from reserves as the actual cost is still to be determined. The design investigative work for second line and Duffin Road 109 realignment of 1.05 million. Design and investigative work of Road 109 for 2026 work and resurfacing of 13.7 kilometers of Duffin Road 25 at a cost of $6.5 million. This $6.5 does include approximately a million dollars for the addition of buffered bike lanes. Structures includes work on four culverts at a cost of 2.38 million, future year design work of $132,000 and small structural repairs of 102.
Just a question, Amy. Do you think Premier Ford will be coming after our bike lane?
I'm not answering that. Summarizing engineer.
Councilor Wrench has a question.
Thanks. I actually have a serious question about bike lanes. And I'm curious, beyond 25 being a county road, is there, could somebody explain why we would put bike lanes there and not on another road that perhaps has less traffic and/or provides much more scenic views and a ride?
Mr. Burns, would you like to answer this?
Glad to. Through you, Warden. So it's kind of a point of where you need to start somewhere. So years ago, when we started doing the paved shoulder program, which can be used for multiple things, including cycling, there would be sort of seemingly random parts of the road network where you happened to be doing capital work and you would build the shoulders out in line with the standard of the day that was articulated through the Duffin County Active Transportation Trails Plan. So we did that. Now it starts to look a fair bit more normal because those things are actually interconnected amongst one another. This particular piece and even the additional width is coming from the approved transportation master plan that came through as part of the municipal comprehensive review, that you may recall. And it gave us guidance as to where we should be doing certain types of work around active transportation, and this is one of those examples. So it is from Duffin Road 10 to 89, so it is kind of an isolated portion, but that's a portion of road that we are working on that calls for this and therefore it is the right time to do it. But it is important, I'm glad that council is aware that this additional work is going to cost approximately a million dollars on top of what that project would regularly cost. We're going from approximately a nine-meter-wide platform to a 12 or 12 and 1/2 meter-wide platform. So this is kind of the first piece of, or element of the transportation master plan that we're implementing and I'm glad that everybody's becoming aware of it because if anybody wants to have any further discussion on it now would be the time.
Councilor Garrett. Phil, are you finished or would you like to carry on?
If I might, just clarification. The cost isn't really my biggest concern. It's whether or not that's the most appropriate place to put a bike lane. And I'm going to reference a conversation that we had in 2024 about traffic in Melanthen with horse and buggies and where it's going. And I'm just not sure if putting a bike lane on a county road from a safety perspective is the best idea.
Go ahead, Scott.
Through you, Warden. So that would be what would be driving the design here. So I'll try to describe it as best I can. So you'll have your typical traveled portion of the road with the center line and the white fog lines. So if we look at one side of the road, you've got your center line, your white fog line, and then approximately ballpark a meter from there, there'll be another white line. And beyond that white line is where the bike lane is. So it's actually buffered from the traveled portion of the road intentionally such that it can function well even in a situation where there might be increased traffic. And that is the standard of the day that seems to be working in many locations because there is a real push to have interconnectivity between settlement areas essentially everywhere. And depending on what the road is, you'll see that kind of a structure come out, whereas some of them still call for our standard paved shoulder width, which would be on a lower volume road. So in short, the specific response, the geometry of the response is in line with contemplation towards safety on that particular road.
Okay, Councilor Garrett's next and then Councilor White.
Yeah, just quickly for Mr. Burns, is there a plan then in the tenure capital to do the southern portion so that it goes all the way to Grand Valley?
Yep. So through you, Warden, yes. So anytime that we would, and I can't recall, you have to forgive me, I don't remember all of the details of the maps that are within the transportation master plan, but our intent would certainly be to not leave it as an island. And I am 100% confident that the transportation master plan did not ask for it to be an island. So it will be, over time, you'll see that whole road be built out.
Councilor White.
Thank you. I mean, I struggle a little bit with this, given the section. I mean, 10 to 89, I travel that road a lot. I mean, Philip's right. I mean, it's not the right spot for one, I don't think. I don't think you would ever get any use or anybody would take use of it. And when you look at, if you're talking about interconnectivity of communities, there's no community to interconnect to going north out of there. You go up and you go up as far as 89, there's no communities along 89 unless you're in Shelburne. I would think that money would be better spent, the nice bike ride and where you would get a lot of use would be the south of 10 down to 109, which is down the road somewhere. So I struggle with that. And I struggle with it because we just, there's been a fair bit of county road work done in Melanthen recently, knowing the issues we have around Mennonites and whatnot, and none of that type of stuff was considered for those stretches. So, you know, and even up there, I would struggle with some in some of the areas, but not in others. So I don't know if that's the right spot to spend a million dollars on a bike lane. Thanks.
Go ahead.
Through you, Warden. So certainly, and I'm glad we're talking about it again, the reason that it's that piece is because we're there doing capital anyhow. So to come back to it at some future date would be much more costly. It wouldn't be the same quality, et cetera, et cetera. So if we were going to do it, we would do it when we're paving that out. And ultimately, over time, the whole road would receive that treatment. So it is simply a starting point. In isolation, does it look odd? Yes, if we left it simply as that island, yes, that would be a strange decision, but that is not the intent. But certainly, if council wanted to change the direction on something as to whether or not we're building out 25, we could do that. This is simply the starting point. And as far as interconnectivity goes, you know, I mentioned settlement areas and those types of things, it goes farther than that. There are a lot of people, the networks for cycling go far beyond simply, you know, Orangeville to Shelburne for a lot of people. And I think that's the overall intent for things, is to have the bulk of sort of easy-access routes accessible for cycling. And this is simply part of that. So again, this came through all the consultation from the TMP, was adopted by council, which is why this is here. And again, I'm very glad that we're talking about it.
Councilor White.
Thanks. Thanks, Warden. Yeah, I understand the logic and I don't disagree with any of the logic, but where I struggle with is the life cycle of that pavement is what, 20 years going to be? 20?
With the way that we're taking care of our roads now, we may see some roads that go beyond that. For a period of time, we're seeing 12 to 15 years and now we're expecting to see 20, 25 years, maybe even more in some cases, particularly because we have preventative maintenance programs. When we're doing multi-lift asphalt, we can go back and the next capital cost is far less because it's a peel and pave as opposed to a full reconstruction, et cetera. So that's a long answer, but.
The point of my question would be, if we're assuming 20-year lifespan, I don't see a need for it 20 years from now either. So, you know, that's sort of where my thought process is with that. Just my thought.
Councilor McLean.
Yeah, thank you. And I can appreciate the position you're in, Scott, because I think the reason that you have put this in the budget was because it went through the MCR process. So it was informed through a process that was also approved by this council. So you're not pulling this out of your hat, you're going by a plan that's been already approved. So I want to recognize the position you're in, but I do agree with the comments that were made that this, on first blush, doesn't seem to make a lot of sense in terms of where we might want to allocate our resources from a priority standpoint. I know that when we've had broad discussions, not just with you, but with everyone, we talked about widening roads where there are more slow-moving vehicles and there was a, the question was always raised around whether we had the funding to do it. And here, we've got some funding to do a large stretch that, to me, doesn't seem to have a lot of slow-moving vehicles on it. And so I would agree with Councilor White, Councilor Wrench, that perhaps there might be an opportunity to save a little bit of money on this project. I agree, I don't even see in 20 years or 10 years that we would even need to go back and add this lane in. But I think this is one opportunity where we could potentially reinvest into other areas of the county.
Thank you, Amy.
If I may, I just wanted to say, because of gas tax money and development charges, if we were to reduce this project by $1 million, we would only save $100,000 of tax levy.
So Garrett.
But Amy, if we were to use it in another location, that would, we would realize the, rather than cutting it, just switching locations, which I think is what some people are suggesting that would, the gas tax could still be used for that project.
Yes, it could. We only have, this is the only project we have gas tax applied to in 2025. It's the only project. But yeah, we could use the gas tax in future years.
I understand the concerns and I understand why we're doing it, like the efficiency of doing it while we're doing the roadwork. So I think that's great. Where I struggle a little bit is doing that in the same year we're doing an active transportation master plan because it's, and I understand why you're doing it, but it could be that the active transportation master plan doesn't see a need for bike lanes in that location. And then there is the, Councilor McLean brought up, and I did get a nudge and whisper from Councilor Hall, there have been other locations where safety concerns related to traffic, such as the slow-moving vehicles and some sidewalks, potentially could, the money could be used for some of those projects. So I'm struggling with this one, but I just, can you speak to why we would do it ahead of the active transportation master plan?
Through you, Warden. So the transportation master plan touched on primary routes, I forget the exact terminology, but generally looked at some primary routes for active transportation that would then inform further details in a reconstruction of a new active transportation plan. So the intention there would be that the elements from the transportation master plan would stay and it would build on that. Of course, that is to the discretion of council, absolutely. I just want to make it clear also that if we choose to not do this particular piece, we are actively changing the routing of the current transportation master plan and the vision that it was built on, which at this moment, I can't recite all of the parameters that it came to its conclusions on, but it would have included a look at local, a look at provincial, look at all of these things to try to build a fabric. And if we start to make, if we make a decision tonight on this, I just want to make sure that we're not subjectively applying those studies. So maybe it means a fundamental shift to that particular route. Maybe it's off, I'm not exactly sure how we deal with that, maybe that's a future discussion, but it does have the potential to change a lot of things that we thought were decided.
I do, I am hearing some significant concern on this item, though.
Could I just add one other thing? Just anecdotally, I think it will be used, well-used because, you know, living in the area, there are a lot of bike users east, west, across County Road 10 that do go north. I don't know where they're going to in the north, but they do go north on 125. So, yeah, and maybe it's just a loop, but I think it will be used. Like it's used, the roads used now, I don't know if the folks from Grand Valley or if you even have any numbers, but you know, you do see bikes there. So I think it'll, it will be used, but I have the same concerns as everybody else and maybe it's not the best. And that's where I struggle because it's the efficiency of doing it when we're doing the roadwork. So I'm not, I'm torn.
Scott.
And it might be a case of if you build it, they will come, which is a lot of, you know, active transportation. But, but Warden Horner, absolutely, I'm not, I'm not trying to just simply defend, keep, I just want council to be aware of the domino effect that this will create. It'll have to be an engaged conversation at some point, likely through the active transportation plan, where we would intentionally rejig this particular route and acknowledge that we changed it. That's all.
Councilor Mills.
Thanks, Warden. More of a technical question, just in terms of funding. Amy, a couple of minutes ago, you had mentioned that this was the only project that we had identified for gas tax dollars. So I just want to make sure, I mean, if some councils are thinking that we could essentially swap the million dollars that's earmarked for this project in the draft budget to something else, which hasn't yet been identified this year as, you know, being available for gas tax funding, is it as easy as doing that? Or does that mean that we would have to bump some other project off to next year and make that sort of eligible for gas tax dollars?
Through you, Warden. The gas tax, I think we have, I can't remember, it's three years or five years to use it. So we can bump the gas tax money into future years. Off the top of my head, I can't recall what is in the 2026 capital budget for roads, but I know there is not a lot of different roads the next few years because we're focusing on 109.
Okay, so for example, say it was council's wish to, you know, scrap this particular project and to move that million dollars to build a bike lane or expand it with on another road somewhere in the county and the wish were to do that this year. Can we do that?
Through you, Warden. Mr. Burns is shaking his head, no.
I thought that was the case and I just don't want anybody thinking that it's as simple as just moving money from this to something else.
Scott, go ahead.
Through you, Warden. It is not that simple. That's all.
Anything further? I think we pretty well beat this one to death. Oh, Warden White, I mean, Councilor White.
Former, former Warden, that guy that used to be. I don't disagree that it's, you know, it's as easy as, you know, just changing a line on a paper, but I also don't agree that if it's a project that we don't think should move forward, that we spend money just because somebody gave it to us. And I think that's one of the things people get hesitant about when they talk about politics at all levels, is like, you know, this notion that some people have that we have money, therefore we must spend it. You know, if, I'd rather take that money, if we can't move it out of that project, then I'd rather do more lane kilometers of the actual road. For example, if we're hamstrung by where we can spend it, then instead of going from 10 north, maybe we go down to 5 and go north, you know, with actual roadwork for people to actually travel on, or something like that. I don't, but I think if we are looking at spending it just because we have it, I think that's the wrong approach.
Thank you. Okay, let's, how do we proceed here, Amy?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Just pointing out kind of a clarity, if we decided not to do the bike lanes, and so that'd be saving us a million dollars, we could roll that forward to a project next year? Right, and we wouldn't lose any of the tax, gas tax?
Yeah, absolutely. We don't have to use all of our gas tax each year.
So from my perspective, the discussion here is, is we're thinking that we can utilize this money at a better level, higher level, that's going to be more effective than perhaps on the bike lanes going up from 10 side road to 89 at this point in time. So then, I don't know what we do to, do we need, would we need a motion to delay that to give direction?
Thanks.
Thanks, Madam Warden. If council would like to remove the $100,000 from the tax levy that's related to this project, then just sort of by consensus, we can we can do that. And Amy will keep a running list of all of those items. And when we've gone through the whole budget, she will have a list with the amounts of each item. And then at the end, you can vote on the total of those items rather than making motions throughout the process. It's just a little bit easier if we keep a running total, and then you vote on them all at the end.
I like that.
Okay. So we'll we'll have that as a as a. Oh, yes, Mr. Burns.
Sorry, Warden, if I'm becoming a nuisance. So so I think if if council wants to do that, great. And I think what we would do is very likely go back to sort of our standard cross-sections. So there would still be a paved shoulder, but it wouldn't be as extensive, if that makes sense to council. Because there's multiple reasons why you may want to pave a shoulder aside from cycling, et cetera. So we probably revert back to our standard, which you've seen mono on Road 18, several other roads. So that would probably so you'd still see something out there, not just to the the level at which we were talking when we first started.
Okay. So Amy, you've got note then. All right. We'll let Amy carry on.
Thank you. Okay, so I think we left off on summarizing engineering, the status quo being 3.83%. With capital, that becomes 1.08. And with the proposed additions, it's 1.42%. Of course, the change we made today is not included in these numbers. Climate and energy. Okay, climate, energy, their expenses are down $935,000 or 60%. That is because there's one item in admin and one item in service delivery in admin, I think, that we have actually in 2025 new. They include three full-time positions and two contract. Some are interim positions. And salaries and benefits are up a little bit extra because we have two admin staff in operations that we have redistributed amongst all the divisions. So there's a slight increase there because of that. Other highlights, advertising promotions and special events are $30,500. Consulting fees are $25,000, and corporate climate training is $5,000. There's an asterisk beside climate training, because the plan was to have the majority of the work done in 2024. But due to unforeseen circumstances, the vendor on the vendor's side, they were not able to get all the work done. And there's about $7,000 that needs to be carried into 2025. And because we've already raised those those tax dollars in 2024, I'm proposing that we adjust the 2025 budget for increasing the training to by $7,000, but also having that being funded from the rate stabilization Service delivery includes an increase in the rural water quality program to $60,000 and support for experimental acres and youth climate activation circle, which totals Other highlights in IT and communications, software costs include annual fees for energy management software of $10,000, energy modeling software of $1,000, and Adobe licenses of $3,000. I just wanted to talk about the Adobe licenses. The licensing model for Adobe has changed. And so there's a lot of increases across all IT and a lot of divisions because we now have to pay an annual fee, whereas we just used to have to buy the license and hope it lasts forever. Yeah, the net next slide, the net increase for proposed additions is $88,000 in 2025. Most climate and energy additions are project-based, with the exception of the staff, which are not being proposed until 2026. Previously committed.
Yeah, I just wanted to note on this page, and I've already mentioned it to Scott, that that we're putting in $2 billion for the home retrofit program, which I think is great. The awkwardness is that we can't publicly announce this program because the funding agency hasn't hasn't given us permission yet. But we are planning to do it in next year this this year because we have it in the budget. The part I didn't understand, if you go to the next page, it has the Better Homes Dufferin Energy retrofit program. I got that. And then down below, it has Buildings retrofit study, $200,000 with an asterisk. And I is that different than than the energy retrofit? What is this $200,000 for building retrofit study?
Amy?
Through you, Warden. That is that's something different. And I will talk to that when I get to that for sure. But the Better Homes Dufferin Energy retrofit project, it's the project total is 11, 11 and 1/4 million dollars over four years. We don't know how much we're going to spend each year. We've just put in an estimate based on the cash flow that we've developed with the with FCM. Yeah, when we can announce it, we'll announce it.
And I think the reason I brought it up with Scott, it's going to be really important when we announce it, that I think all of us counselors have to sort of be ambassadors to this program when we go back to our municipalities and let our residents know that this program's there, and they can apply for it and do all kinds of fun things. But we can't announce it yet. No. Okay.
So Amy, we've been approved, but we can't say anything. That's right. Is that right? Maybe. We've been approved. We don't know.
We are waiting a formal announcement as to who is receiving the funding.
So that announcement has not been made, the official announcement?
Through you, Warden, correct. And we are hoping to learn whether or not we are successful very, very shortly. And the plan ultimately, should we be successful, would be to to immediately start reaching out to the local tier municipalities to talk about the LIC bylaws. We have a draft that can be used to help get those things through. And we would be hopeful to have a program up and running roughly mid 2025, should we be successful.
Thank you for that clarity.
And I just wanted to state that this program has zero cost to the county, other than staff time. It is funded. There will be a cash flow issue in coming years, but we're confident we'll be able to manage that because people who are eligible for the program do have 10 years to pay back, plus interest. New to 2025 is they did add legal fees, just because they have found that there's a lot more contracts with vendors and different funders that need to be reviewed. So we've added in $10,000 for that. We have a scheduled update to the Dufferin Climate Action Plan, which will merge the Dufferin Climate Adaptation Strategy and include a corporate climate plan into a single 10-year climate master strategy and action plan of $250,000. We are offseting that by transfer from reserve rate stabilization of $200,000. Based on strong positive results, residents survey results, residents have requested a rain barrel subsidy program for all residents in Dufferin County to encourage onsite stormwater management of $25,000. The town of Orangeville already provides the service to its residents, so the county program would be extended to residents of the whole county. There's a small amount for new training software to support online climate training available to all staff. The building retrofit study of $200,000 is to be offset by transfer from rate stabilization. The study will provide a detailed costing plan and business case for deep energy retrofits to county-owned building excluding housing, which will be viewed in 2026. So that is what is included in the budget package. But there are two retrofit studies, and we inadvertently mix the two up. So we actually want to do the better home, the the building retrofit study for the housing next year, and then the municipality-owned ones the following year. So we're just going to switch those around. It does change some of the numbers. The value, I think, is 325. But there is some funding in the balance comes from rate stabilization. So similar to the other one, there's no impact on the bottom line. So we're just going to make that switch. Any questions on climate and energy? Summarizing climate and energy, the status quo operating is 7.58% increase, and the proposed additions are 23.18. Moving on to corporate facilities. The corporate facilities is the admin admin cost for staff that support all facilities excluding Dufferin Oaks, as well as the building-related costs for the courthouse and the Edelbrock Center. Revenues, we've adjusted the rent revenue to reflect the actual cost recoveries for the courthouse lease costs. Those have actually been coming down because our costs have been coming down. But I have our first actual change to the budget here. I want to add $15,000 in revenue to it's not very big to the rent revenue because we have decided to lease out 53 Zina, and we'll be receiving about $15,000 in revenue next year. And then the other revenue includes revenue from the public electric vehicle charging stations. Moving on to expenses, there are 13 full-time positions and one part-time seasonal position within facilities. There's a big decrease in admin and office. This relates to the building condition assessment and energy audits that were completed in 2024. We do the BCA's every five years. We do budget for them within corporate facilities because it's easier. But when we actually expense them, we expense them to all the individual Other highlights, consulting includes $20,000 to address miscellaneous building studies required to ensure the longevity of our assets, as well as $2,000 for the development of service contracts. There's been an increase in service costs for the EV charging stations of about $15,000. And IT and communication includes work order software with annual fee of $15,000. And then we are anticipating a decrease in vehicles and equipment as we shift towards electric vehicles. Transfers, we're proposing $75,000 to come from the rate stabilization reserve, just to mitigate some of the increases. And we do we are able to apply small amount of development charges to the debt on this building. Moving to proposed additions, these equate to $116,000 for 2025. There is a new position. It's in the budget to start in March with 107,000. You can go to the next page, if I'm right. For the project manager, 107,750 for salaries and benefits, plus an additional 4,500 in support costs for year one, and $2,000 thereafter, with an annualized cost of $134,000. And then the next is the asset and maintenance management annual fees, which I spoke about in engineering or operations. Same thing, their cost share, though, is only $3,000. Any questions on the proposed additions in facilities?
Counselor White?
The the project manager, is that the one that we're bringing on, looking at housing? Or is that another one in housing? Never mind then.
No other questions on these additions? Okay. Moving to the capital asset fund. We see quite a dip in the capital asset fund for corporate facilities over the next few years before we start building it up again. The prior year carryforward includes parking lot courthouse for $412,000, switch gears, which is electric equipment, $425,000, windows for 21 vehicle, which we ordered in 2024, hasn't arrived yet, for 60 grand, and then some security work at this building, of 42 grand. Moving to contributions, other revenue is funds from Narcan for the electric vehicle charging stations, which there was a report that went to council a couple of months ago, I believe, of $325,000. We have put in debt financing to cover any work done to this building. I'm just going to pause there for a second. In in terms of, we have debt financing in there this year and next year for this building, but we probably won't. We will not borrow until the project is done. What we will end up doing is we will see how much we can cash flow. And then if we run into cash flow issues, then we will get interim borrowing, which then we will just flip into the actual debenture. And then lastly, transfers from reserve, we have $300,000 coming from rate stabilization to cover the balance of the costs of the EV charging stations. Moving on to capital work, there's $2.5 million worth of work plan for 2025, with 1.375 being considered new capital investments. Future work plan will change once we have a further clarification on what work will be done when. For example, we have carpet that is due for replacement over the next couple of years within this building. And if we're going to renovate this building, we're clearly not going to do that. So the the future capital work plan will likely change if we renovate this building. We have two parking lots planned, the north, both the north and the south parking lot at the courthouse in 2025. Under buildings, we have foundation work is required to prevent future funding funding flooding at this building. We have some regular heating and ventilation, air conditioning replacements, and are required at $43,000, as well as updates to our building automation system of $40,000, and windows of 110. Due to the heritage designation of the courthouse, the windows and exterior doors are not replaceable. As such, regular painting is required to maintain these assets. An amount of $12,500 has been included to gauge a consultant to assist with the specifications in 2025. I think the total cost, and Scott, maybe you remember, is around 300 between $300,000 and $400,000 to do the actual painting.
Phil has his hand up?
I do. I had a question about the asphalt paving. So that's at the courthouse that we, as a county, don't use anymore, but we still own it. So we need to maintain it, correct? Question number two, would this be hot asphalt paving?
Scott is shaking his head yes.
I see him. I can actually see that. Would we ever consider using recycled asphalt to to do that?
Through you, Warden, we do use recycled asphalt. Most of the asphalt that we use, we'll we'll spec a certain composition of recycled material. In some cases on our roads, we do a full, like, cold and place recycling and those types of things within a parking lot. Very likely, it'll be back to the the previous one, the mix of new materials with a certain percentage of recycled material. So short answer, yes, but there's always more details to go along with it.
If I we would not consider using 100% recycled material for a for a parking lot?
I suppose we could. We haven't. There's a there are concerns about longevity with that type of work, depending on the material that you're getting. So again, we've we've found that there's a sweet spot, and I forget what the percentage is that we pursue, but somewhere in the neighborhood of at least 20%. On a parking lot, you may be able to increase that more than what we typically do on a roadway. But full recycled is is not something that we have done on a parking lot, no.
Okay.
Anyone else?
We also have two pickups that are scheduled for replacement in 2025. Similar to other divisions, we do have one that is being carried forward from 2024. And then under new capital investments, we have the renovations to this building, as well as the electric vehicle charging stations. Summarizing corporate facilities, the status quo operating is 13.07. When you add capital in, that becomes 27%. With proposed additions, it's 40%. Moving on to waste services, revenues are up $2,000. User fees includes revenue from residents for additional beg tags. The other revenue is household hazardous waste, full producer responsibility for designated materials, not providing adequate compensation to cover county's event day costs. We're getting about $60,000. And then other revenue also includes And then other revenue also includes money from circular materials for waste services guide and waste app and three and a half thousand dollars for the sale of composters. Expenses are down a hundred thousand dollars. That's mostly because similar to climate, we have stuff in the twenty twenty four budget that we had as new and this year we're showing it under new in twenty twenty five, sorry, relating to the household hazardous waste mobile depot as well. They did do some audits in twenty twenty four. Staff includes four full time positions, between six to eight seasonal casual positions, one co op student and two summer students. Other highlights in a minute office includes ninety eight thousand five hundred dollars in promotions, twenty two thousand dollars for waste audits and twelve thousand dollars for postage. Service delivery, we have the annual autumn loose leaf collection and processing for Orangeville and Shelburne at a budget of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. The actual costs for twenty twenty three were a hundred and thirteen and I haven't seen the cost yet come in for twenty twenty four. And then vehicles and equipment similar to other divisions, we're seeing small savings as they transition to electric vehicles. So this is the one area where I actually have a budget addition. Report went to committee late last year, giving staff permission to move forward with going to market for the twenty twenty five household hazardous waste day events. The contract came in higher than anticipated. We budgeted two hundred thousand dollars and the the lowest bidder is two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So we need to increase the budget in order to for staff to be able to to award the contract. The additional eighty thousand dollars is the same level of service we provided previously, the costs have just gone up. Any questions or comments on that? I could propose that when we add that, that we have half of that come from reserves because it is quite a big increase. So the impact is only forty grand instead of eighty.
Comment, anybody? That sounds good, doesn't it?
Okay, moving on to.
You, so people have to tell me when you have your hand up, that's good.
Seems to be working quite well. I I'm wondering if instead of taking it out of the rate stabilization reserve, we look at a few of the small subsidy programs. Green bins comes to mind, rain barrels comes to mind, a couple of other things and and try to try to even it out that way rather than keep beyond taking from reserves.
Through you, Warden, those programs do not make, they don't really make money.
Okay.
Transfers, we have twenty two thousand dollars to offset the cost of the waste audits coming from the waste reserve. And then we do, we are able to apply small amount of development charges to offset the cost of new green bin, green, green bins based on growth. Proposed additions, there are a couple of additions proposed, which are to be funded from reserves, so the net increase is zero. Next slide. Under previously committed, we have the long term waste management strategy of a hundred thousand dollars, which was last completed in twenty eighteen. The update will review the county's progress and any setbacks to meeting its waste diversion goals. While reviewing the path forward for the next five years, the work will be funded from the waste reserve. New to twenty twenty five, which we actually introduced last year. Consultant services to assist in the planning approval for a mobile or permanent household hazardous waste depot, twenty five thousand dollars. Also to be funded from the waste reserve, county staff are exploring the components and options and opportunities for depot service and will bring forward a recommendation to council for consideration in twenty twenty five. If approved, the consultant would assist in preparation of the required components of the approvals, application to the Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks. Are there any questions on those? Waste Services capital is very minimal, which limits their required fund balances. The amount of carry forward is for the vehicle that we ordered in twenty twenty four, it hasn't arrived yet. Moving down to contributions, the only contribution is tax levy and it's thirteen thousand dollars. And the only work planned for twenty twenty five, you can go down a couple of slides on you, is a vehicle. Summarizing waste services, the status quo operating is three point two eight percent. When you add in capital, it becomes three point three. And with the proposed changes, it's three point two nine, the largest. I don't know what my note says, I'll just skip it. Okay, moving on to County Forest. Revenues are primarily timber sales and a little bit for hunting and event permits. County Forest has two positions and one summer student position. The salaries and benefits are, there's a small decrease here, similar to operations and fleet. We did have an over, an overlap for the replacement of the the forest manager last year. Other highlights, the minute office includes one time cost associated with the promotion of the new operating plan, seventy nine hundred dollars. And twenty twenty four included a one time purchase of animal proof trash bins. Facilities includes thirteen thousand, one hundred dollars for snow clearing at some of the tracks. Moving to transfers, at the end of the year, any surplus that we have within the county forest is transferred to the reserve fund. The value of the reserve fund has declined significantly over the last few years. So we're just applying a little bit each year. There's a small net increase, sorry, proposed additions. There's a small net increase in twenty twenty five with no staff proposed until twenty twenty seven. New to twenty twenty five is to attain certification through the Sustainable Forest Initiative, which will provide tangible validation of sustainable management practices and open doors to new opportunities such as the carbon credit market is seven thousand dollars. And then in line with recommendations from the recently adopted transportation master plan, develop an active transportation master plan to establish a detailed strategy with input from local municipalities for recommending additional local candidate routes that support the network of a hundred thousand dollars to be funded by the reserves from wind turbines. This is a multi department project and I'm not sure that it's actually going to land in county forests, but we've just dropped it in there for now and it is at this point likely to be led by planning. The capital asset fund, we had planned on depleting the capital asset fund in twenty twenty four, however, with the delay of the delivery of the vehicle, we have a little bit to carry forward. The sixty thousand dollars capital and work includes the carryover of the vehicle as well as a small amount for replacement of gates and fencing. Summarizing County Forest, the status quo operating is eight point four seven percent. When that you add in capital, it becomes eight point zero three. And with proposed additions, the total increase is ten point five six percent. Any questions for County Forest?
I had a question in terms of the trail because at one point in the description that talked about the person with the forest is also with the trail. And so there's no expenditures or any budget items for the trail.
We do have some maintenance money, I believe, in operations and fleet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, just it wasn't clear where all, whether that's going to all be one kind of unit or whether, yeah, Scott?
Through you, Warden, so yeah, the the maintenance of the asset will occur through operations and sort of the philosophy and management of the recreational element of it will be dealt with through forest.
Okay. Philip?
Thank you, through you, I have a a question about the Sustainable Forest Initiative certification. I mean, it's it's such a small amount. But and and I understood this was to gain access to the carbon credit market. Is this a national market, an international market? If it's national or even international, do we believe it's still going to exist? You know, by the middle of twenty twenty five.
Scott?
Through you, Warden, a great question. All I can really offer on this, and I I have some notes here just to keep track of things, but so this is through the Sustainable Forest Initiative, through the Eastern Ontario Model Forest Group Certification. So it will, amongst other things, afford the opportunity for resources. It will confirm to the public that we are in fact managing our forests sustainably. It will even open up to funding and different funding models, potentially the one that that you spoke to, but certainly others. So there is more to it than simply that that one piece, but great question.
Anyone else? Okay, Amy, is this the end of this section?
I have two more slides.
Okay.
So just to summarize, recap, same slides we saw at the beginning, what the percentage increases are on the status quo for each division. And then the next slide shows with the with the proposed increases. And that concludes this one.
Questions? Minute break, a five minute break so that we can get through, Philip, you have a question?
I I I do, sorry to keep you from your break. Just because everything moved so quickly, I I if I could just broadly, the capital work piece, there's a significant amount of work, far more than we've usually done. We generally don't get done what we want to anyways. I don't know that it matters because it it would just get carried forward, is that correct?
Pretty much, are you talking about engineering or just generally?
So this was from the very beginning, I think there's ninety one million dollars worth of capital work planned. That's, you know, almost twice as much as we usually do and we don't ever do all that, we usually do.
Yeah, a large chunk of that is the operation center, the new operation center of just over twenty million. And then we do have additional projects related to that are developer developer funded, related to the one oh nine realignment.
And and that leads beautifully into the next question because I couldn't find this anywhere either. Are you able to give a high level estimate of what it's going to cost the tax levy to add the new operation center and the renovation to the Edelbrock Center?
No. I can, I can find out based on how much we think we're going to borrow, but I haven't gotten into doing the analysis in terms of how much it's going to cost related to the ongoing operating costs.
And 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 that's fine, and I should have asked you this beforehand, but if that's something, I think we have another budget meeting on the thirtieth. I I would really appreciate seeing that because I I am concerned that we're going to saddle future councils with a pretty hefty increase simply to pay for these things. Yeah, so I it would be, at least from my standpoint, very useful to know what what that's going to mean to the tax levy moving forward.
Good point, Phil, thank you for bringing that up.
Last question, if I may. The electric chargers, that was, I think that's that's six hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. We were applying for a grant, is there offsetting revenue in the budget based on what we thought we'd get for the grant? Or are we only going to put that revenue in if we get it? With another way of asking, are we putting in the chargers regardless of if we get the grant?
We do have offsetting revenue in the budget and no, we are not putting them in if we don't get the grant.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Solomon?
Thank you, Madam Warden, this is silly, end of this segment is we've been promised a trade war by the end of, maybe the week after that or a week after next. How, like as along with Phil's point, should we be doing a whole lot with whether we know what is that's going to be like? Whether our constituents have any money left, we've been kind of threatened that we might become state. I don't know what can be done, I don't know if, nobody in this room, I'm sure, can answer it and and I certainly don't know either, but I just would maybe be cautious. You know, you know who you're dealing with and you don't know how that's going to turn out, so. I guess we have to go on like business as usual, but just who knows, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Todd?
Just quickly, I think the the commentary by Phil was really good. In terms of, I know we don't know the number, but we do know what the impact could be in twenty twenty six because we saw, I think it was plus ten percent to the taxpayers and then the year after that is also abnormally high too, right? Based based on that, I can't remember what that number was, but we do know that we're heading towards double digits for the next two years.
You're correct, I do have some numbers, but just for the debt. And it's based on twenty million dollars of debt for the operation center and six million dollars here. It it depends on how much we actually end up borrowing, but I can give you the numbers that I have included in the budget for future years. Just to pull it out.
Okay. Thank you, Amy, let's take that five minute break then and be back at the table in five. Thank you, Amy. Let's take that five-minute break then and be back at the table in five. I do like this new setup with the staff around the table. Is everybody comfortable with this? Oh, it's just Scott. Well, we can move him somewhere else. Change your name, Todd. Okay, folks, we're now on the General Government Services piece. So in your documents, make sure you're on the right category. Go ahead, Amy.
Thank you. I'm just waiting for Sonia to bring up the slide deck. Okay. General Government Services includes council, Office of the CIO, Corporate Services, and People in Equity. Unfortunately, this committee does have the most slides. So starting off with council and grant, the status quo increase is 0.33%, and with proposed additions is 9.83%. Just some highlights, really is only the salaries and benefits has decreased as we've reduced the per diem by $28,900. Other highlights, training and conferences for all of council is $52,000. And then the membership fees for Western Wardens, EMO, and FCM total $49,100. There are some proposed additions within council. Council members have previously proposed an increase to contributions to the Food for Thought grants of 40% or $28,000. We are also proposing an increase of $45,000 to the community grant program for a total of $140,000. And additional support to Headwaters Community in Action for administration of the county grant program of $15,000. As per council's request, HCIA did provide us with a proposed increase for 2025 and future years. The total increase for 2025 was $140,500. But due to other pressures, we did not include the total amount, but did include an increase of $40,500. And this is split between this budget and community services. And then, of course, there are further increases planned for future years.
Councilor Nix?
Yeah, I just want to check. I understand the additions, the new grants you're going to give, but back up to the, on the main page, service delivery, including grants, that does include the $50,000 we're giving to the food bank? That was a commitment more than one year, was it, was it not? Or is my memory at fault here?
The additional amount that council proposed for the food bank, I've included in the $28,000 in the Food for Thought grants on the proposed additions. It's included in that amount there.
Twenty-eight thousand?
Yeah, so...
I thought we made a commitment to...
We decided to increase, I think, from 40 to 50,000, or I can't remember the exact amount, but it worked out to 28%. And we thought that it was only fair that Shelburne got that as well.
I think I'm following that. Okay, okay, thanks.
Any other questions on the proposed additions under council?
Seeing none.
Then summarizing them, it's a 0.33% increase status quo and 9.83% with the additions. Moving on to the Office of the CIO. The Office of the CIO consists of Administration and Communications, Clerks and Emergency Management, and they have a net increase of 6.83%. There are no proposed additions for 2025 in the Office of the CIO. Capital, the only department that has capital is Emergency Management. And as you can see, they pretty much only have one thing. So the, yeah, the line goes up and down as we require. The capital asset fund balance kind of goes up and down as we need the money. Moving into Administration and Communications. You have to pardon my short forms. Some department names are too long, so I just kind of shortened it to Admin and Communications. In the package, you will see that Admin and Communications did include revenue. When I was putting together the slide deck, I realized that the revenue actually belongs under the Clerks Department. And so I made the change on these slides. The total difference is $1,750. So Admin and Communication does consist of four full-time employees, and the big increase in 2025 is because we did out a position in 2024. In terms of highlights, we are including community engagement training for all staff that are involved with public consultation at a cost of $7,000. And we have consulting for ongoing strategic plan implementation work of $60,000, which we propose to come from reserves. Which is the transfers on the next page. And then, since there's nothing new, summarizing the status quo budget is increase of 9%. Any questions on Admin and Communications? Moving on to Clerks. They have a little bit of revenue. They have a little bit of revenue for parking tickets and then POA cost recovery. We do provide phone and internet services, and they just pay us a cost for that. On the expense side, they do have a small increase of $15,000 or 3%, and there are three staff within that division. Other highlights, IT and Communications. The Escrib annual licensing fee is $36,600. And then Internal Services Recovery, it is just an allocation that we do between different divisions to make sure we're capturing the full costs within the other divisions. Typically, we only do them between divisions that receive subsidy. And then, of course, I have included a small amount coming from the rate stabilization reserve to offset the big jump as a result of the Escrib. And summarizing, Clerks Department's status quo is 5.32%. Emergency Management. They have one full-time staff and a small portion for the emergency backup position. They have a net decrease in expenses. 2024 included an amount to relocate the Emergency Operations Center. As well as a small amount towards the Resiliency Hub planning. The Admin and Office also includes training, a $1,500 increase, and photography and videography of $2,000. Service delivery includes $22,000 for emergency exercises and public education, and $10,000 for emergency preparedness kits, and then $36,800 for the 911 contract. Transfers, we have an annual contribution to the municipal emergency readiness reserve. And 2024, we did include an amount coming from reserve for the relocation of the Emergency Operations Center. The capital asset fund, you can see at the bottom of the line, it increases over the next few years as we're setting aside money for future replacements. Contributions, we're hoping to get some funding for the Resiliency Hub of $50,000. And then we will be pulling $25,000 for the rate stabilization as it's new. We have one project planned for 2025. It is a joint project with Climate and Energy, I believe, facilities. The outdoor community resilience hub of $100,000 will serve as an important piece of infrastructure that will offer a gathering space for community members to connect, access resources, and strengthen climate resilience. Featuring sheltered seating, educational signage, and climate adaptive landscaping, the hub will support workshops and events focused on emergency preparedness and local collaboration. Any questions? There are no proposed additions. Summarizing Emergency Management, they're up 3.98% and with capital, it's 3.79%. Summarizing the Office of the CIO Department, just the same slide that we saw earlier. Moving on to Corporate Services. Moving too fast. Corporate Services consists of three, four divisions technically. IT, Finance, Corporate Finance, and Procurement. They have a status quo increase of 1.95%. You can be on the next slide. On the next one. With proposed increases, we jumped to 12.06%.
Sorry, Todd, go ahead.
I was just curious, the setup that we have in terms of how the grid is done. I know that our CIO is the Acting Director of Corporate Services, really has been for quite some time. Is that, are we replacing that? And if we're not, is that money in the budget? And if it is, should it be? Or are we just going to allocate it differently? But the grid still says that we have the position, but, I mean, I haven't been with the county for a long time, and I haven't seen, I don't recall who had it, and it feels like it's been a long time.
Through you, Warden Horner. It's a great question, Councilor Taylor. No, that position has not been filled for quite some time. I think if you note in one of the objectives for 2025 for the Office of the CIO is to take a look at the senior management structure and to make some decisions on how we might like to move forward. So there is funding in there now, and I would suggest that when we have that conversation later in the year, we will likely reallocate it. But I don't think it would be something that we would completely delete.
Capital, the only department that has capital is IT. The tax levy here remains relatively constant as the capital fund balance does go up and down from year to year. IT. Revenues are down $45,000. Essentially, the other revenues are reallocation of costs to other divisions. And 2024 included an allocation of staff time towards the website project, which is now done. And the government transfer is IT contracts with the lower tiers, including GIS and support that they provide. Expenses are down $24,000. They have 10 full-time positions and two student positions. The Internal Services Recovery is, as I said earlier, is an allocation of cost to other divisions. In 2024, we added an IT tech position to support Dufferin Oaks. The increase in Internal Services Recovery is an allocation of the costs associated with a new position to Dufferin Oaks. Despite the added position in 2024, salaries and benefits have a reasonable increase as they did have additional staff in 2024 to support the website project. Other highlights, consulting fees include a review of the current phone system, graphic design support, and other services to ensure the integrity of the IT infrastructure of $59,000. Professional fees, training and development of staff is over $80,000. And then they have a small amount for legal fees to support the review of contracts. Within service delivery, primarily the services to support the GIS at $29,660, which includes M&amp;R air photos in 2025, which are updated every three years, of $6,000. And the balance is just work done through agreements with others and is offset by contributions from others.
Councilor Garrett?
Just on GIS, I think, do we have one GIS person currently? And I think, is there, the plan is to add somebody in 2026? 2027?
Sorry, we have one GIS, and then we do have a one GIS summer student. And the other plan is to add somebody, I believe, in 2027.
Oh, okay, yeah. I was just wondering, with all the stuff that Mr. Burns has proposed, all the additional software, I think that they're potentially GIS-heavy, right? Some of those, the studies and the softwares. I was just wondering if we need to consider adding that GIS person earlier. You know, maybe not 2025, but just more of a, just like to get it. We seem pretty light on GIS staff as... We seem pretty light on G I S staff, is, is all I was thinking for the size of the organization.
Through you, Warden. It, it's a great observation, Counselor Garrett. Certainly additional G I S resources would be valuable. And I think something that we would, would really like to add in the future. Just in terms of all of the additional staffing positions, we did go through a very robust prioritization process at the senior management level to determine which positions to include in 2025. And that one didn't quite make the cut. But as we go through and do another evaluation when we move into 2026, we certainly look at them all again and they could get reprioritized at that time. Especially as you note, there is this move to add additional software as we're going forward.
Okay, thank you.
And then IT and communications. It includes annual software fees and subscriptions, including our Microsoft licensing for the entire organization of just over $500,000. Website hosting and maintenance of $39,000, software security of $34,000, and hardware maintenance of just over $78,000. We do have $100,000 coming from the rate stabilization reserve to mitigate fluctuations in IT-related costs. We do have a number of contracts that renew at different times. So we have some that renew annually, some that renew every two years, some that renew every three years, every four years. So just to mitigate those increases, we often apply an amount from reserves just to mitigate the ups and downs. In relation to proposed additions, the net increase is $37,000. There's two there. In 2025, the, to conduct a comprehensive telecom system review to ensure the robustness, security, adaptability, and cost efficiency, $20,000. And to conduct a tabletop cybersecurity exercise to prepare our team to effectively respond to potential cyber threats, $17,000. Moving on to capital. Is there any questions on the proposed additions for IT? Straight forward. The capital asset fund is one of, I think, only two that it will be going into a negative in IT. This is mainly due to the increase we've been seeing in the prices. And as we add more staff, we certainly need more equipment. There's a 6.6% increase on the capital levy. We're, I'm trying not to increase it too much from year to year. The balance forward is, is a small surplus. It's just a few small items that we haven't purchased yet. Other revenue includes an allocation from operating for new staff. And then transfer from reserve is similar, transfer from one department that receives subsidy. In terms of the capital work plan, they have $666,000 worth of work planned. All of their stuff falls under equipment and machinery. There's updates to the phone system at various locations of $102,000 and user devices of $200,000. This includes laptops, desktops, iPads, and cell phones. I just wanted to make a note on the cell phones. Prior to 2025, the cellphone replacement was included in operating budgets. Because of the overall value of the, all of the cell phones that we own, we decided that we should be capitalizing that. So we've moved that into the capital budget and removed it from the operating. And user devices also includes $30,000 for the replacement of a plotter. IT infrastructure is $364,000, includes network switches, wireless access points, and battery backups. It also includes $200,000 for server and storage replacement. Summarizing IT, the status quo operating is only 0.96%. And with capital, it's 1.78%. And then with the proposed additions, it's 3.2% overall. Any questions on IT? Okay, moving on to finance. We have, next slide. We have 10 full-time positions and currently one contract position. 2025 does include a full year of the new financial analyst position added in 2024. Admin and office includes consulting update as required to the asset management plan. We have $40,000 in there and as well as $50,000 for the development charge background study, both of which will be offset by reserves. And then in IT and communication, our largest expense relates to the annual fees and maintenance of our existing software of $53,000. Transfers, as I said, the asset management plan and the development charge background study we will have coming from the rate stabilization. Ideally, the development charge background study should be funded from the development charge reserve fund, but my study balance is currently in a negative, so, which is why I'm taking it from rate stabilization. There's only two divisions that have digital modernization this year, finance and people and equity. So we have three projects on the go. We are in the final stages of implementing our new financial information system, Business Central. The money does include backfilling of a position to support the implementation. And the total costs are estimated at $203,000 in 2025. We are also implementing the new asset maintenance management system that will support all divisions. And we're just capturing the implementation costs within finance. And that's $190,000. And then, a new version of our existing budgeting software will be required to support the changes in Business Central to allow for proper integration between the systems. And we budgeted $100,000 for that. All of these projects are being funded through reserves that we've previously set aside for our digital modernization projects. Proposed additions are, request is $171,000 for 2025. We are proposing a new accounting manager. And actually, we already have this position as a contract employee. When we moved into the implementation of the financial software, we decided to backfill our deputy treasurer. And we created, so that she could focus on the implementation of the project. And we created this new accounting position who supports the day-to-day and the staffing. And the positions become integral. And what we've found with the deputy treasurer is she never actually let go a lot of her duties just because there's too much work to do. So without the added position, we're going to be in trouble. And then the, on the previously committed is the, is the new software, our new financial software. The annual fees are approximately $110,000. And because we're phasing it in, it's $35,000 for 2025. And then again, the same software that we spoke to in operations, our asset and maintenance management. The annual fees for finance is $11,700. Any questions on those? So the status, oh.
Has a question?
Yes, thank you. And, and it, it's about the proposed addition of staff. And, and this comes from ignorance and sort of what the C O mentioned on Monday about how the county is a different animal than, than local tier. I understand what the finance department does at the town of Grand Valley with collecting property taxes, paying stuff. I am, because the county doesn't collect those, right? Other than sending out remittances to the local tiers, I'm less familiar with what they do. So if Amy or someone could provide maybe a general overview of sort of the major aspects of the, of the accounting division? And then why there's an extra person required?
Sure. We do over 200 different reports to the ministry throughout the year, to various ministries, actually. I think there's probably seven or eight different ministries. So this position actually helps supporting verifying the information and ensuring that our financial analysts have done them correctly. We process over, I don't remember the number. We process, it's in the budget document, we process quite a few invoices each week. Probably five or 600 invoices every week we're processing. Our division also includes payroll. We only have two people within payroll and that's a stretch. What else do we do? The main point is reporting and then doing all the financial reporting and the budgeting here to council. And tax policy and investments and insurance. Okay. So the status quo budget for finance is 5.17%. And the total with the additions, it's 21.83%. Keep going. You went the wrong way.
Sorry.
Okay, corporate finance. So corporate finance falls within finance, but it's separate. Because a lot of the things that are within corporate finance are more corporate in nature. And specific to finance where its finance is really focused on the day-to-day. So in here, we have the investments and the insurance and stuff like that. In terms of revenue, the taxes included, taxation includes supplemental level levies, payments in lose, net of tax write-offs, all of which are at estimate. And, but we do have a reserve we can draw from if our estimate is off. Investment income will continue to decrease as we've seen the interest rates go down. And then the government transfers includes a subsidy for court security. The net decrease in expenses is $35,000, which is mainly because, the next slide, Sonya, the vacancy savings, we actually increased that from 750, let me go back, from 750 to $1 million to better reflect the actual, it's approximately 2.2%. We haven't run the numbers, but I think I spoke to you in December that at the end of September of this year, we were just over $900,000 in savings. Administration and office includes just over $1 million for assessment services through impact. We make a payment to the town of Orangeville for courthouse security of $125,000. And our liability insurance is included in here as well as an amount to cover any insurance costs that are below our deductible. That all adds up to $178,000. Transfers. You may recall a couple of years ago, we talked about applying rate stabilization. Thank you, to the, just the bottom line of the budget, we captured in here. We had proposed it to be $750,000 in 2025, but because of the increase in the budget and also because the value of the rate stabilization is quite large, we felt that we could leave it at a million dollars. So overall, the net decrease technically is 84,000 or 4.13%. Any questions on corporate finance? Okay, procurement. Procurement has three full-time staff. Admin and office includes consulting fees to assist in the development of new procurement templates of $5,000. Legal fees of $3,000. And we shifted the training and development costs of the director of corporate services from other divisions into those, this, into procurement. Overall, the net increase is 5.35%. Any questions on procurement? Pretty simple. Again, a summary of the corporate services increase by department status quo, the net is 1.95%. And then with the proposed additions, it's 12.06%. Moving on to people and equity. So we're presenting people and equity differently this year. We split out to five different divisions, including people and equity admin, human resources, equity, learning and development, and health and safety. This department does look a little wonky. As you will see, some divisions are way up and others are way down. The division is very, the department actually is very much project-based. So all we're simply doing is shifting projects from one division to another. There are two main drivers to the 11.85% increase. One is staff that we added in 2024. And then the second is a decrease in the health and safety revenues. In terms of proposed additions, the increase now becomes 12.17%. There's no capital in people and equity. People and equity admin, they have three full-time positions. There's been a lot of recent retirements of long-term staff that have resulted in an increase in our post-retirement benefits of $28,000. We're also seeing an increase in our non-union WSIB claim costs. So we've increased that to reflect actual, but those are offset by transfer from our reserve fund. The increases, as I said earlier, we added a new position within this division, which is leading to the increase here. Other highlights, admin includes excess indemnity and occupational accident insurance of $136,000, which are both offset by the WSIB reserve fund. Long service awards and staff events are $25,000. And consulting includes $34,000, including a small amount for data management policy and framework development of $4,000. And then internal services recovered is just an allocation from other divisions. Transfers from WSIB reserve are put in to offset the costs of claim and insurance costs. I just wanted to note here that it will actually end up being less because we did have an excess indemnity insurance policy that we decided not to renew based on recommendation from our actuarial study consultants because the value of our WSIB reserve fund is healthy enough that we'll be able, we don't, we don't need that insurance. For proposed additions, the net is zero. We've included the non-union wage market review and it's proposed being offset by the rate, the rate stabilization reserve because it's a one-time thing. And then the financial summary, the status quo and the proposed, with the proposed increases is 30.97% increase. Any questions on the people and equity admin?
Just ever so quickly, I appreciate the way that was described. And certainly, we've been over this. I'm just curious, on those positions that we've added recently, specifically the investigator, I think a lot of us were curious how that was going to go. It would be great if, over time, we had discussions about how that's going and like a little progress report and was it a good investment or not? And if I could, it would be the same comment I would have about procurement as well. Certainly don't doubt that good works are being done there by any stretch, but it would be great to understand what is the savings? And, you know, what value are they bringing longer term? And just be great outside of this. So it's maybe not a budget question, but certainly understand that both departments are doing great, great work. But would love to have a few details and just to check in at some point. And appreciate what, what the numbers are.
Thanks, Todd. Phil, apparently you're online and would like to answer, ask a question?
Yeah, I can't answer my question, but I will ask. And it, it's about the wage market review. And earlier, Rohan said we'd committed to doing it every four years. I, I just want to make sure, because I couldn't remember if we did it in 21, 22. So I'm assuming we did it in 21 the last time.
Affirmative.
Easy peasy.
Okay, moving on to human resources. Oh, hang on, we have one more question.
Phillip's question just made, so that, that market review that you have, those, those findings would be not for this council, correct? Like we would, we'd implement at a later date? Because there's really, there's two things. There's, there's staff and then there's, there's council. So you're going to do, do both in 2025?
So.
No, it'll be 2026. Well, I'm curious, I'm curious when you're going to implement and I guess what year? So it's 2025, you're going to do it. And then you'd implement post this council.
Yeah, through your chair. So yes, the not, what we're talking about is the non-union wage market review. And so the review would take part and happen in 2025 and we would look to implement in 2026.
You, you are going to do one for council though too, right?
Sonya, through you, Warden. There is one done for council at the end of every term of council, for implementation in the next term.
And that doesn't come in 2025, it comes in 2026?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, human resources. Okay, human resources has six full-time positions and one student. Highlights include legal fees of $65,000. They have $15,000 included for specialized recruitment advertising to target underserved groups. And then internal services recovered, they do have additional staffing costs. They're directly, that directly support Dufferin Oaks. Digital modernization, this is the other division that has digital modernization. Implementation of a human resource information system is estimated at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Work on this project began in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four, with final product selection expected in early twenty twenty-five, with implementation to follow. The three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is an estimate, and it is possible we may require more funds. If that is the case, we will present, bring a report to council, of course. And as part of the digital modernization project, costs associated with this project will be offset by reserves set aside specifically for these items. Summarizing, HR status quo is two point four-nine percent. The digital projects, of course, have no impact. But there will be impacts in future years when we bring the annual fees on, so they're, yeah, it's two point four-nine percent. Moving on to equity, there are two full-time staff in equity, then one position was added in twenty twenty-four, hence the large increase to salaries and benefits. Highlights, corporate training includes twenty thousand dollars for the balance owing for the anti-racism training, which began in twenty twenty-four, which will be offset by transfer from reserve. We have forty thousand dollars for keynotes for days of significance, two S L G B T Q plus people leader training of four thousand dollars, indigenous education for people leaders of thirty-five thousand, and then we have consulting fees, including, which includes fifteen thousand to support policy development. And then within service delivery, we've included thirty thousand dollars for community discussion series. Transfer shows them out from anti-racism.
I just had a question about the training. So, so many of these training programs have been common in workplaces for ten, fifteen years or so. I'm not sure how long they've been rolled out here at the county, but is there any attempt to do any evaluation of the programming in terms of any impact they're having with staff on their work or on the morale, like positive or negative? Is, are we, are we doing an evaluation on these, these trainings and the impact that they're having?
Rohan?
Through you, Warden. Short answer around, so the mandatory trainings that we've done so far for people leaders, we, we do do an evaluation in, in terms of, yeah, so we do do an evaluation for the mandatory trainings. In the, at last council meeting, we had brought forward a report, just doing sort of an equity, people and equity department status update, and there was a, a section in that report that really spoke to evaluation, and so, and the results of those evaluation coming from, from staff. Around the trainings that we do that are, are voluntary, we are not doing evaluations for those that, that aren't voluntary, but it'd be easy, easy enough to do an evaluation for those trainings that are not mandatory for, for staff. And so it, within the broader sort of picture of the, of the equity strategy, it was noted from staff that the provision of a whole host of trainings related to equity, psychological safety, inclusion, so we're trying to be responsive to those identified requirements and requests from staff.
Are you okay with that, James?
Yeah, thank you.
Phil, I understand you have a question?
Thank you. I'm wondering if we could just go back to the recruitment advertising that was mentioned briefly, and if Rohan could give sort of a, a description of that, I miss, from what I understood, well, no, how about I just ask for what that's going to be, and out of curiosity?
Through you, Warden. Great question. So in addition to sort of the traditional sort of legacy websites that we use to, to post all of our external postings, when we are posting externally for jobs, we also have, we're, we're working with a number, about three sort of community, community-specific job boards, and those are around persons with disabilities, indigenous, indigenous community, and the two S L G B T Q plus community. And so these are organizations that cater directly towards those particular communities, and so we also post all of our external jobs to those communities to try to enhance, to have a more robust pool of recruits for all of our job postings.
You have more questions, Phil?
No, no, just to summarize, so this is basically a way of just getting word out as, as far as possible to find qualified candidates.
Affirmative, yes.
Right on.
Okay. Okay, the summary for equity, status quo increase is seven point one-nine percent with no proposed additions until twenty twenty-seven. Health and safety. Government transfers is the money that we get from lower tiers. We now only have three utilizing the county health and safety services, plus we had a change in the funding model that has resulted in less revenues from the lower tiers. Expenses are down thirteen thousand dollars. This division includes one full-time position, and we reduced the staffing because we removed a student position that we just haven't been filling. Service delivery includes costs for training provided to other divisions or organizations, and there's a hundred percent offset by other revenue. Traditionally, we offset approximately fifty percent of the health and safety costs from the WSIB reserve fund, so we have continued to do that. Proposed additions, some small additions here, new health and wellness program to promote employee wellness and well-being of twenty-five hundred dollars, and a series of events to promote health and safety work of, week of four thousand dollars. Summarizing health and safety, the status quo increase shows a hundred percent, because previously it was not on the tax levy, with approximately half coming from the WSIB reserve and half from others that use the service. This is where we have one of the largest increases in people and equity. Any questions on that division? Moving to learning and organizational development. This division has only one employee, one position. Some highlights, corporate training includes conflict management resolution, train the trainer for Dufferin Oaks staff, twenty thousand dollars. A leader shop workshop series of ten thousand dollars and training to build capacity of management to support mental health in the workplace is seven. Consulting fees include development of a leadership core competency identified in the equity audit of sixty thousand dollars. Transfers, we are pulling from rate stabilization for the Dufferin Oaks train the trainer, the twenty thousand dollars, and then the development of the leadership core competencies, because it's the one-time cost of sixty thousand dollars. Summary, the status quo increase is down eight point five-five because we've shifted costs to other divisions. Any questions on learning and development?
Counselor Mills?
Thank you, Madam Warden. This may not be the, the place to ask, but, but it's why I'm going to ask. How, how do we budget for, for conferences for staff, and in particular, senior staff? The reason I'm asking, I, I've noticed over the last few years, the, you know, Dufferin's representation at Roma, AMO, I suspect FCM's the same, when it comes to our senior staff, is pretty light, as compared to a lot of other counties, and I'm just wondering if, if there's a gap there in, in the budget, and we're just not allocating enough money for our senior staff to take advantage of these?
Who am I sending, Miss?
Through you, Warden. The, the amount for conferences for senior staff is included in their individual budgets under conferences, and certainly there likely is some room in those budgets for staff to attend AMO and, and FCM and some of those other broader conferences. That's a discussion we can have, there just hasn't been, I don't think, the need, the need to do so, but I, I do hear your point about there being additional representation from other counties, and that's definitely something we can look at.
Okay, the next slides are just summarizing the status quo and the proposed increases for people and equity. Any, so there's no more questions, that concludes GGS.
Thank you, Amy. So are we breaking for a dinner break here?
Yeah.
Okay, and we'll return back to the table at? Six-thirty? Six-thirty, okay. And the meal is?
I think it's in the kitchen, straight down the hall.
Okay, all right.
And Amy is going to continue the Amy show. And I see Raj is in the hot seat next. So we'll continue on with community development and tourism.
Thank you. We'll just wait to get the presentation up. Okay, we're moving into community development and tourism.
I don't have any questions.
Not yet.
Just having some technical difficulties. There we go. Okay. Development tourism has four divisions. You can go to the next slide. Building shows as zero because there's no reliance on the tax levy. Combined, the departments are at 4.8% status quo. And with proposed additions, it's 5.93%. The museum does propose some changes, but the revenue and the expenses net to zero. So it looks like there's no increase. Capital. So similar to the other ones, you see the orange line, which is the value of the capital asset fund, going up and down. And the blue line remains the same. A museum and building both have capital. Okay, moving on to building services. Let's start with revenues. An amendment was made to our current fee schedule that will be in effect January 1st. The amendments capture permit fees for new items added to the building code. The amendments capture permit fees for new items added to the building code, increase fees for non-conforming permits and enforcement cases, and to provide further clarity where there was room for misinterpretation. Even with all that, it is still difficult to predict what the actual activity will be. So the permit revenues do have a small increase, and we did remove AMRANT. The other revenue is recovery from the Institute for National Disaster for the Hurricane Clip Program. Moving on to expenses. Expenses are up 38,000 or 1.87%. Salaries and benefits include 10 full-time staff, one contract, and one summer student position. Other highlights, IT and communication includes the annual fee of about $115,000 for CityView. Vehicles and equipment, they will see savings as they've shifted to electric vehicles. And then internal services used is a lot of those recovered amounts that we've pulled in from other divisions.
Bill, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Through you, Warden. The difference between revenues and expenses is massive. Now, I understand that it doesn't directly impact the levy, but it is eventually going to impact fees. And I don't remember it being that big. Amy, could you? And I don't know, this isn't your department, but could you speak to when the gap got so big? And is it simply, and why, if possible?
Yeah, through you, Warden. We added a few more staff the last few years. Two or three, or maybe even, I think, three, three in the last few years, which has pushed it up. One of them is a contract position that is due to end next year, I believe, the two-year contract. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it doesn't seem to account for, but like, they're double, right? Expenses, I think, are double revenues, even more.
Yeah, the other piece too, like I said earlier, the actual revenues are really, really hard to estimate. So we kind of go off of what we think they'll be, what they've been in the past year or two. And nine times out of 10, it always ends up being more than what we budget. So we end up either taking less out of the reserve or even putting money into the reserve fund.
But, and I don't mean to labor the point, I don't think you have a year where you're projecting to cover costs up to 2028, if I looked at that chart correctly.
Yeah, I think if, I think if you do look out to 2028, we will not have enough money in the reserve fund.
Okay.
Okay, transfers, we were talking about the...
Sorry, through you, Warden. Just to address Council Wrench's question there, we are expecting to have lower permit numbers. Therefore, there would be lower revenue. However, we will see this rise again. As you can take a look at that graph, you will see dips and ebbs and flows. And this is predicted through the permit fee study that we have undertaken. So it will eventually go up. And like Amy mentioned, it's sort of hard to predict at this point what exactly we're going to be seeing in terms of permit numbers, but I just wanted to add that as a point of clarification.
Okay, we are proposing, well, because it balances out to zero, we have $1.2 million coming from the reserve fund in 2025. And in summary, because there's no impact to the levy, it's a 0% increase for building. Any other questions for building? Okay, moving on to the Museum of Dufferin. User fees include programs and tours, admissions, and membership revenues. Government transfer includes a one-time, the grant that we receive annually, which honestly, I don't think it's ever changed since I started at the county. Other revenue includes an increase in consignment sales to better reflect what our actual has been, and an increase in fundraising revenue to support interactive exhibits to $38,000. On the expense side, it's up 6.34%. The museum includes seven full-time positions, one part-time position, and four student interns. Highlights, supplies and exhibits have increased to $48,500 to allow for more interactive program, programming, partially offset by additional fundraising revenues. Programming costs are $19,500. IT and communications, we have software licensing fees have increased to $17,300. And website hosting and maintenance costs have increased to $11,500. Facilities includes snow clearing of $15,800, which decreased by nearly half. We have a small decrease in cleaning costs of $44,000. And then general maintenance has a small increase to $75,000. And the internal services recovered is just an allocation of support costs primarily from the facility staff. Transfers, a small amount is included to offset operating costs each year, the $8,000 from the museum trust. Any excess fundraising or donation revenue received is transferred back to the museum trust. There are a couple of proposed additions, the net to zero. They're looking at adding additional events to increase visitor engagement specifically for Halloween and Family Day of $1,000. There's a new grounds maintenance program to allow for natural asset management of $4,000. And lastly, new revenue generating opportunities resulting in a rise in bookings and revenue for space rentals of $5,000. I just want to touch base on the natural asset management. You're going to see that in a number of buildings. It's something new that our facility department has, is rolling out. We've found that we've been neglecting our trees, and it's just money to go in and prune trees and ensure that they, they're all good. Moving on to the capital asset fund. Looking at the bottom line, you'll see how the capital asset fund decreases over the next few years. This is due to the value of the work over the next little bit. Next slide. The prior year carryforward, $28,000 includes some electrical work of $150,000, museum windows of 20, exterior doors of 24 and a half, and museum water tank heater of $4,000, which I think it's been carried forward a couple of years. We won't replace it until it really needs it. And then the balance is just savings on other projects. Tax levy requirements remain unchanged between '24 and '25. Moving to capital work. Land improvements, we have parking lot is due for replacement of $150,000. Buildings, we have updates to the fire alarm panel transformer and switch gears of $31,000. Window replacements of 20 and a carryover from 2024 to make the front doors more accessible of $26,000. To summarize, the museum status quo operating is 5.59%. When you add in capital, it's 5.25, and then with additions, it's still 5.25. Any questions for the museum? Moving on to land use planning. User fees are planning fees, and government transfer is actually funding from the lower tiers for the services we provide them. On the expense side, it's up 36,000 or 6.77%. They are, there are three full-time positions within this division. Other highlights, we have legal fees of $10,000 to address any matters related to the Ontario Land Tribunal due to provincial planning statement conformity and disputes. Consulting includes $15,000 for asset mapping, infrastructure, and servicing needs, $10,000 for boundary expansion and agricultural assessments, $10,000 related to official plan amendment approvals for intensification of conformity, and $20,000 for settlement boundary assessments. We are, we've included a small amount from the rate stabilization just to mitigate ongoing increases. To summarize, planning, the net increase is 5.3%. Any questions on planning? Moving along to economic development. Other revenue includes $10,000 for selling ad spaces and paid content in the 2025 Explore Dufferin Guide. The expenses are actually down $47,000 because last year included the economic development strategic plan. There are two full-time positions within this division. Other highlights, an admin and office. Hosting industry roundtable meetings, we have $5,000 set aside. Consulting fees for sector plans and strategies of $20,000, and Explore Dufferin Guide of 60 grand. Service delivery includes $40,000 for the Small Business Enterprise Center, two community events of $20,000, tourism development of 20, and sector development projects for another 20. IT and communication includes website hosting and maintenance of $15,000, as well as software annual fees for customer relationship management software of $10,000. Proposed additions in 2025, net to $25,000. The development of a community improvement plan to support investment. The Planning Act does allow municipalities to designate community improvement project areas to offer financial and non-financial incentives to create employment opportunities and amenities. We are proposing $80,000 for this project come from the rate stabilization reserve. And then the development implementation of the Investment Attraction Program in consultation with local municipalities to promote Dufferin to investors and site selectors, domestic and international, by highlighting the competitive advantage of locating and starting a business here. We have $25,000 in the budget. Any questions on those?
Counselor Garrett?
Could you go back one? Just thinking of the Investment Attraction Program. Is that enough? Like, I see how you could get through that amount of money very quickly. And I think it's an important piece for economic development, so just curious.
Raj, can you explain? This was supposed to have happened this fall, and it wasn't? Or is it the same thing?
Through you, Warden. Counselor Garrett, you do raise a good point, but maybe I'll just clarify what the warden is referring to. That was our Investment Attraction Day, and that has been pushed to spring of 2025. So that's completely different. It's a separate line item. But what the Investment Attraction Program really speaks to, and if I can just add a little bit of detail here, we were one of 10 municipalities that were selected to go and pitch to tourism development site selectors this year. So it was, it was an amazing experience, and we were one of two rural municipalities that went and presented Dufferin County to different tourism developers, one of them being Hockley Valley. They were there along with the Marriott and Hilton. So in order for us to continue to do that type of work, you're absolutely right, Counselor Garrett. $25,000 is a drop in the bucket, but given the fact that our overall budget came in at 5%, I was trying to be conservative when coming up with that number. But we have developed an investor's guide, which has done fairly well. We've actually won two awards for the investor's guide. So we're well on our way, but I mean, if it, council so wishes to give me more money, I don't say no to that. But $25,000 does get us started at least.
If you notice in the 2020, let's go back a slide, 26 to 27, we are slowly increasing that amount under a new 2025 expense for the Investment Attraction Program. To summarize, economic development, the status quo operating is 3.49%, and with the proposed additions, it's 8.33%. And then again, the last two slides are just summarizing the status quo and the proposed increases.
Any further questions? You got off lightly, Raj.
So maybe...
Counselor Garrett?
Yeah, maybe while we're waiting, we could have a discussion at the council level if we want to increase that at this point, the $25,000 for the implementation plan. I think, personally, I think I would like to see an amount that the department can do a good job. I appreciate trying to save money, but I think it's, it's important. I think it's important. So I'd like to know, I guess, if that's, if the real number is 50, and where we go from here. So I don't know if you've got a number in mind?
Through you, Warden. Do you want me to go back to where Brenda? Okay, excellent. The real number that ultimately we came up with, when we were developing the Investment Attraction Strategy itself, was closer to $80,000. But like I said, I was trying to be conservative, given the fact that our overall budget did come in at 5%, so.
Yeah, I think, personally, I'd like to see it go up. I don't know to what level. I think I still need to think about that. If anyone else has a suggestion, happy to hear it. But I do think it's an important tool for all the municipalities and Dufferin to have, so.
Counselor Taylor, did you have a comment?
The only thing I was going to say is it's similar to what you were saying, Chris, which is why I prompted you, is sometimes when you spend money, a little bit is a waste. It's a joke. It doesn't go far. It doesn't do what it's intended. But I'm not familiar enough with what we're trying to accomplish. And even to say the 80 grand, I don't know what that is. So it's hard to make an interpretation at this point, but I don't know where we go with it because I don't, I feel like I don't have the information, but it feels like it's just not enough to sustain a good program.
Counselor Gardhouse?
Through Warden. I would make the suggestion that we put that on the list of considerations right now, that we've come back to it and whether we want to increase it or just keep status quo, but we'll, we'll think about it, and when it comes back, we'll have the opportunity to consider it because it is points taken that have been made.
Okay, last, last piece. Brenda, now you're in the hot seat.
Okay. Health and Human Services. Consists of community services, Dufferin Oaks, paramedics, and public health. So we're going to start with community services. There are currently three divisions within community services with a status quo decrease of 0.41%. Moving to the increased, including the proposed addition slide, we add a new division that we're calling Housing Strategy, which leaves us at 12.36% increase. Community services capital, similar to all the other ones, the capital asset fund does go up and down as the value of work goes up and down. Capital includes both housing and McHaleburnside Village. Early years in childcare. On the revenue side, we've actually seen a small reduction in our regular childcare funding of $2.8 million as the funding shifts to Seawellk, which increased by more than $11 million for a net increase of just over $8 million. The other revenue includes, as we get additional subsidies, it also means we are able to have revenue to offset our admin costs. So this is just allocating the revenue from the programming lines to the admin. On the expense side, there's eight full-time and seven part-time staff. The total increase there, sorry, in expenses is 8.43 million dollars, or 50%. Back to the staff, early in 2024, we did add a third community services worker to support the increased requirements of Seawellk, which is contributing to the large increase in salaries and benefits. Highlights within service delivery, with the increase in funding, becomes the increase in service delivery of a net increase of over $8 million. And then the internal services use is an allocation of support costs from other departments, including finance. Proposed additions, the net for 2025 is $107,000. This is previously committed, is the... It is the data and funding analyst position that was approved at the September council meeting. They are responsible for providing support to deference licensed childcare sector. And council approved this temporary position as a 12-month contract, and it is anticipated that based on funding, a request to create a permanent position will be proposed in 2026 budget, which is the proposed staffing line included in the chart. Any questions on that? To summarize, early years in childcare, due to additional funding, the status quo is a debt decrease of 8.69%, and with the proposed additions, it becomes an increase of 1.55%. Moving on to housing. On the revenue side, rent is certainly a large portion of their revenues as its government transfers. We're seeing a decrease in subsidies as agreements with our housing providers are expiring. The other decrease relates to the reaching home program, where we budgeted based on what we knew at the time. And since that we pulled these numbers together, we did learn that we will be getting more. Other revenue, similar to early years in childcare, is primarily the allocation of administrative funding from the various programs.
Counselor Nix?
Maybe I'm on the next page, expenses. I'll wait until we finish revenue, and then I have a question on expenses. Oh, okay. In looking at the total expenses, what thought that went through my mind? We discussed at council the possibility of doing something with the parking lot on Elizabeth Street. And I can't remember how far we got with that discussion. I think there was some sense of urgency to get it done before this term of council is over. Is there anything in this expense budget that is anticipating doing something with the parking lot on Elizabeth Street?
Brenda, do you want to answer this?
Actually, I can answer this. So there's actually a new division called Housing Strategy, which focuses on just that we'll get to. So within the housing expenses, the net expenses are down $114,000. The Housing Division has 10 full-time positions and one full-time contract position. It also includes two housing stability positions that report to Ontario Works Leadership. The net decrease in salaries and benefits are a result of shifting internal positions to external agencies and are offset by the increase in service delivery. Highlights, there's savings within admin and office of $218,000 as debentures on the original housing buildings have been paid off. Service delivery includes increases to the rent supplement program of $80,000 and shift of the reaching home funds from salary to service delivery of 258. And then the Internal Services use is an adjustment to reflect the actual time and costs of facility staff supporting the division. Onto transfers. We continue to apply reserves to offset the inability to collect and apply development charges to housing. We established that in a plan a couple of years ago. Over a couple, we have a few more years to go.
Counselor Garrett?
Just back to expenses. I did ask a question in advance, Brenda answered, and it was whether or not the rent supplement is maxed every year. The answer was yes. But I probably should have asked, I think you just mentioned it, how much we increase it on an annual basis and actually, like, what is, how much are we spending on that? Sorry to put you on the spot. I tried my best to ask all my questions in advance, but I forgot one.
So that would really depend on what we do receive through subsidy for that. But each year, when we do receive those, we do max it out.
Okay. Because I was just thinking, you know, I think when we were talking about the parking lot at the council level, there was some hesitancy to do anything before we had the task force in place, perhaps. And so I was just wondering if this is something we can increase to make an impact right away. You know, I used to have a building, and I had tenants who used this program, great program. So that's all I was thinking.
I think Amy's got an answer for this.
Yeah, sorry. Housing is ingrained in me because that's where I started when I joined the county. So the rent supplement program, there's two portions to it. One is funded and one is not really funded. We do get a little bit of subsidy still, but as the agreements run out, we're no longer getting federal funding, which is, I think, there's a decrease there of 68. We have proposed, or we have included in the budget, $824,000 for total rent sub, which includes, I think, maybe 200, which is funded through reaching home.
Okay, thanks. I think that's another one I would like to discuss further, maybe at the next meeting because, like I said, I think that's something where we can make an impact right away rather than waiting to build buildings. So.
The rent sub program, if I may, we do have agreements with a number of different buildings, and I know that we've had a little bit of difficulty the last few years getting more landlords to agree to it, which is why I know that the housing staff have shifted to the housing allowance.
Okay.
Which we then kind of give the money to them, I think.
And just so then the difference would be the supplement goes to the landlord, which is the program I was involved in. The allowance would be an amount that goes to the individual.
Yes.
I get it. Thanks.
Anybody else?
Proposed additions. All we have here is the new grounds maintenance program to support the trees. Moving on to capital, the capital asset fund is expected to go down over the next few years before it goes up, but the capital levy will remain relatively constant. In terms of the carryforward, the majority relates to windows and doors of $890,000 that we are carrying forward and an HVAC project of 250 that we've actually shifted to 2026. In relation to contributions, we do have a little bit of money coming from CMHC that we received a pot of money that we can apply over a three-year period. There is approximately $2.2 million of planned work for 2025. Includes updates to exterior walkways of $195,000, which includes the trail behind 43 Bethesda towards John Street, as well as parking lot updates of $30,000, which is, I believe it's just consulting for future work. And then equipment and machinery, we have appliances that are replaced on an asinine basis. We have $62,000 in the budget. The buildings, we have a continuation of the security upgrade project of 105, electrical upgrades, including indoor and outdoor lighting, as well as fire alarm panels of 77,000. HVAC includes regular replacement of boilers and planning for 2026 replacements of 92,000. Kitchen, bathroom, and unit flooring are updated as required, and we have $352,000 in the budget for that. Flooring also includes common room and hallway updates of 188. We have window replacements of $760,000, and then entrance vestibule balcony and other exterior door replacements of $150,000. Summarizing housing, the status quo operating is 1.65%. With capital, it's 1.35%, and with the proposed additions, it's 2.17%. Any further questions on housing? Ontario Works, there is a small increase in the administration funding of $45,600. The majority of the Ontario Works subsidies are dependent on the actual costs. Other revenues are recoveries of monies previously flowed to clients and, for the most part, are remitted right back to the province. Ontario Works has 12 full-time positions and supports the housing stability team. Regular increases have been offset by attrition due to the reduction in funding in 2024. I didn't include any highlights for the other expenses within admin because they're pretty much the same. I will note on the service delivery, there's a decrease there, and that directly relates to the change in the funding program. Transfers, we did include a transfer to offset the decrease in funding in 2024. We had originally planned to do that in 2025 as well, but with the attrition, we no longer need to do that as well as the additional funding. And then we have a small allocation to IT capital for future replacement of equipment. Proposed additions, we have proposed increase from Headwaters Community in Action to better support the community. I mentioned that in the council section, as well as an additional $20,000 to support DC moves. Are there any questions on these? Summarizing Ontario Works, the status quo operating is a decrease of 0.41%. With proposed additions, the total increase is 5.07%. Next is Housing Strategy. This is the new division. It includes funds to support the execution of the Housing Strategy Plan. Proposed additions, so salaries and benefits for project lead for implementation of the Housing Strategy of $130,000 plus $4,500 for admin and IT-related costs. Consulting to assist with next steps of $50,000, and a transfer to reserve of $500,000 has been included to set aside funds for potential future capital work.
Counselor White?
Thanks, Warden. First of all, I'm learning on Monday, I'm going to try to not use any but statements. So I absolutely support the project manager piece. Absolutely. We've set a course, and we need to follow through with it. And given Steve's comments earlier, I mean, we are in a challenging financial situation economically at the moment. People are being squeezed from a lot of different sides. In April, we face a fairly significant interest increase in the carbon tax. There's new rules coming around the capital gains that are not backed by legislation, but that's besides the point. And given what the incoming president is suggesting he may or may not do, you know, certainly a lot of people in Dufferin are going to be squeezed by that, not the least of which is anybody in the farming industry who deals with commodity prices on a regular basis. You know, costs are going to go up, revenues will probably go down, and that'll have a knock-on effect on just about every other business in Dufferin County. So I would think, given that this is the first year of the project lead position, maybe there's a way we could fund that out of reserves because reserves essentially are, a lot of them are supposed to be rainy day funds, and it's raining. So maybe there's a way we can take, roll back the budget increase a little bit by using reserves for the first year of this position. It's already built into the proposed next year's budget, so that maybe that should be something we should look at, even if it's a reduction in the transfer to reserve that offsets. Maybe that's a way we could, you know, maybe lower our increase a little bit.
Is there an amount that you would like me to include with that?
Well, I think we could probably look at moving that entire amount into reserves, at least for the first year, until we sort of have a better understanding of where we're going with that, which is the whole point of bringing on the project lead.
Yep, we can do that.
I didn't quite understand the last comment. Move what, the 500,000? Is that what you're saying?
The 134.
Essentially, I'll just apply 134,000, $810 from reserves to offset the cost of the project lead.
We have it on the list. It's on the list. Okay. Counselor McLean?
Sorry, just to clarify, though, so the plans don't change. You're just looking at how to fund it differently to reduce the levy. Is that right? Okay, thank you.
Phil?
This is my only strategic plan priority. And so in that sense, I support, well, I support doing a lot more than what we're doing and a lot faster. Saying that, my understanding from the Housing Strategy was there wasn't going to be anything built for a number of years. That makes me curious as to what the project lead would be doing and why we would also need, in addition to having a project lead, we would require another $50,000 for consulting services. So I don't know who could address that, but if somebody could take a stab at it, I'd really appreciate it.
Through you, Warden Harner. I will take a stab at it. And if I get into trouble, I'm going to look to Brenda for some help. So as you recall, at the council meeting when the Housing Strategy was reviewed, there was some direction given to try and expedite a process where we would identify three properties that could be given a priority. And so there have been some conversations with the consulting team that was working on the original part of the project, and they are moving ahead with figuring out what the next piece of implementation would look like. And part of that next role is to work with the planning staff in both Orangeville and Shelburne to determine how those particular sites that were identified could actually accommodate the properties within sort of the planning constraints within both of those municipalities. So that a fair amount of that consulting number is to get that work done so that we know exactly from a planning perspective how we could move, which properties are the top three? Because we, that original list was done just on a preliminary assessment, but now we're doing sort of the real deep dive assessment on which three properties would work the best. And then once that is done, which will be quite soon, and there's also some consultation that goes along with that, because we don't want to pick three properties and then find out that, you know, from a community perspective or from a servicing perspective, it doesn't make any sense. And then the project lead would come into, onto the scene and take over from there and start to really bring together the resources required to start developing plans for those specific three properties, to look at funding opportunities that could be utilized, and to find, most importantly, to find partners who could actually build and operate those facilities on those three properties. So that's the preliminary plan as we see it now. There may need to be some tweaks, but that's pretty much how it looks at this point.
Anyone else? Okay, Brenda, you're off the hook on that one. Okay, Amy?
Okay, so the next slide, where am I? Okay, Community Services is done. Move on to Dufferin Oaks. The status quo increase for all of Dufferin Oaks is 0.74%. It includes long-term care, community support services, and Mall Lloyd Center. You'll notice that there's a big increase in Mall Lloyd Center and a decrease in long-term care, and that 100% relates to capital. There's a growing need in Mall Lloyd Center in 2025 for more capital dollars. So all that I've done here is I've reduced the contribution to capital for long-term care and increased it by exactly the same amount in the Mall Lloyd Center, which is There are some proposed additions, which result in the increase being 4.82. And then we have the capital. They have a couple of really large projects. You'll see in 2025, the purple bar is quite high. And then we pretty much deplete the fund, and then we need to build it up again for future large projects. Okay, we're going to move into long-term care. User fees are revenues from residents, which has seen an increase over the last year. We've also seen increases to ministry funding, particularly aimed at addressing increased direct care staffing requirements. On the expense side, at the time we pulled this together, we had 118 full-time and 131 part-time positions at Dufferin Oaks, including six contract positions. As somebody who sees payroll quite often, it changes. As somebody who sees payroll quite often, it changes constantly. There are people always coming and always going. The increase in the salaries and benefits, sorry, you can do the next slide, Tonya. We did add additional hours due to the increased funding, as well, we shifted to social worker from an external contract to a full-time position in 2024, and the balance is just regular staffing increases. Expenses, 2024 included $150,000 for the older adult study, which is leading to a decrease in admin in office in 2025. We have an increase in legal fees to support union negotiations of, to $70,000. Additional amounts have been included for multi-year project to replace office furniture, $14,500. Service delivery includes $910,000 for food. We have $233,400 for external contracts to support the residents, and nearly $635,000 in supplies and products to support staff and residents. And then, the internal services used is the IT position that we talked about earlier in GGS. Transfers, we do have a transfer from the WSIB fund to offset associated costs. We talked about the claim and insurance costs within people in equity, but we do charge directly Dufferin Oak shared at Dufferin Oaks. And then, the $172,000 is an allocation to capital of funding that they receive. For proposed additions, the net increase is $64,000 and relates to the medical secretary proposed to start in March. The cost is $61,700 plus $4,500 for, in support costs, and a laptop. And then, the annualized cost is $74,000. Are there any questions on that for Brenda? Okay. The Capital Asset Fund. Lots of ups and downs over the next couple of years for the, for long-term care. The amount, the 1.48 for the prior year carryforward, this includes fire alarm panels of 220, security of 400, and nurse call. And the balance of that is, we actually received some additional funding in 2024 that we were able to apply to the Capital Asset Fund instead of using the tax levy dollars. So, we, I think, added an additional over $500,000 to the fund, so that's what that is. Contributions, as I said earlier, there's a significant decrease in the capital levy for long-term care. Yeah, I already spoke about this, so I don't speak again. So, other revenue is the allocation of provincial funding from operating of about $192,000. Capital work is just over $3.1 million for 2025. Land improvements, and we have exterior walkway and patios of $40,000. You can go to the next one. Buildings include security of $400,000, updates to the fire alarm panel. Our largest project is the replacement of four rooftop units at $1.75 million. Renovations of housekeeping closets at $25,000 and replacement of laundry room floor of $35,000. Within equipment and machinery, we have regular replacement of macerators of $24,000. We have kitchen, laundry, and bathing equipment of $94,000, furniture of $66,000, and lifts of $60,000. Vehicles include an ongoing replacement of the community support services. 2025 includes $240,000 for two accessible wheelchair vans. Other includes the nurse call upgrades, which started in 2024. We included $150,000 in the 2025 budget, as we anticipated work would commence in 2024. We actually need to increase the two, this to 275. They just weren't able to get started on the work. They had some issues with the vendor. The funds have already been raised, are included in that 1.6 or whatever it was that we carried forward, so it's just increase in the work value, no impact on the tax levy. Summarizing long-term care, status quo operating is .05%. When we add in capital, it decreases to minus 3.44, and then, with the proposed additions, minus 2.32. Any questions on long-term care? Moving to community support services. On the revenue side, they received an increase to funding in 2024 for assisted living of just over $510,000. On the expense side, they're up $550,000, which is the new funding. There are four full-time positions, three part-time positions, and 11 casual positions within this division. Other highlights. Mileage, we've decreased it to 46,300, just to better reflect our actual. And then, the assisted living funding and service delivery. There are a few proposed increases to community support services. The total is $191,000, which then more than doubles in 2026. Previously committed includes transit of 168 that has been budgeted. We've offset that by $80,000 transfer from the rate stabilization reserve. The new, you can go to the next slide, Sonya. The new to 2025, all relates to the older adult, the implementation of the older adult strategy. A supervisory level position is recommended, which would also support the implementation of the enhanced transportation plan. 25% of this position would be allocated to support the older adult transportation, and 75% towards community support services admin. The total cost for the year is $140,000, including benefits, training, and new computer. Program-related costs include a part-time driver as well as vehicle-related costs. The revenue collected from user fees result in a net cost of $38,000, which doesn't include the supervisor above. Next, we've included $10,000 to support a marketing plan for senior services. And then, lastly, we included a transfer from the rate stabilization reserve to offset the increase of this. Is there any questions on this?
Counselor Garrett?
I think that, so the marketing plan is probably directly related to, I think the study showed that the, the older adults were not aware of a lot of the program, and that's why they weren't accessing them. Is that correct? So, this is to sort of address that?
Through you, Warden. That is absolutely correct, and even targeting with, you know, the medical community to make sure that they're aware of the programs and can share that as well.
Okay, good, thanks.
Rising community support services, the status quo is 14.21%, and with the proposed additions, the total increase becomes 83.15%. Moving on to the Mall Lloyd Center. Regular increases to rent are here. Other revenue is cleaning costs associated with early years. There are no direct staffing costs with the Mall Lloyd Center. Highlights in the expenses, facilities includes $20,000 increase to building maintenance costs to better reflect actual costs. The addition of snow clearing costs of $25,000, which was previously included in the internal services recovered. Previously, the snow clearing contract was one amount for the entire complex. The new contract allowed us to break out the cost by building, and therefore, we were able to make those adjustments. The Capital Asset Fund will be in a negative at the end of 2025, despite the doubling of the capital levy. The prior year carryforward of $54,000. Actually, when I reviewed this slide, the prior year carryforward made no sense to me. It should actually be $150,000, as we deferred both security at a $20,000 and washrooms at 130. It looks like the opening balance that I have in there for 2024 is actually incorrect. So, once I change that, then everything will be fixed. I'll fix it in the final budget package. In terms of the capital work plan, we have just over $500,000 planned for 2025. This includes updates to the fire alarm panel of $100,000. Regular replacement of several HVAC systems at 212, renovations of the public washrooms, $130,000, and then, as needed, window replacements for $45,000. Summarizing the Mall Lloyd Center, the status quo is 88.85, which looks huge, but of course, that's the shift from capital. If we hadn't have done that shift, the increase would have only been 1.74%. Are there any questions on the Mall Lloyd Center? So again, we have the status quo, and then, the proposed additions.
Steve, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Warden. I was just wondering about the status of the property on Highway 89 and the town line. Highway 89 and town line between Amherst and East Luther. We talked about selling that. We talked about maybe selling that or not. I just wondered where we are, or could we use, explore that again and maybe use that money somewhere this budget or next? Sorry.
Steve, I'm not sure anybody has an answer.
No, I don't either. Or...
Counselor?
Talking about the property at East Luther and, and Highway 25.
I think so.
So, the Deppard Federation of Agriculture is planning to bring their proposal forward, I believe, to the next Economic Development Tourism Committee meeting.
All right, thank you. As long as we're, it's on our mind, and it's...
As far as they're concerned, they've been putting that...
Yeah.
Proposal together, okay.
My like would be, tell it and throw the profits at something human, like in the, in the services we provide in our, towards the poor and the destitute. But, thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Raj, did you have a point?
Yeah, through you, Warden White. I'm not Warden White, sorry.
Okay, he's over there.
So, used to saying Warden White, sorry.
I know. So am I.
Through you, Warden Horner. We actually have been in contact with the Deppard Federation of Agriculture with regards to the pasture project. They should be coming forward with a proposal, and we have been in regular meetings with them. So, I anticipate at the January 23 committee meeting that we would have something to discuss then, and they will also be coming forward as a delegation to that meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, just summarizing Dufferin Oaks. .74% status quo, and then, 4.82% with proposed additions. We're almost done. Moving on to health services. This includes two areas, paramedic services and public health. Combined, they have a status quo increase of 2.64%, with proposed additions, it's 4.02%. The capital. Yeah, this one, if you look closely, the orange line does go in the negative quite a bit. Part of the problem with, we're having, doing this 20-year capital budget relates to the ambulances. We have to order them one year, and then, we don't get them until one or two years later, so it kind of just messes things up. But hopefully, it will all work out in the end.
That's a great way to budget, hopefully.
Okay, moving the revenues, so there's an increase in subsidies. We received $116,940 increase to the offload nursing program, and then, just regular increases to the paramedics. And other revenue relates to the community paramedic program that is funded through the hospital. On the expense side, they do not have any salary and benefits, as those fall within service delivery, as we contract that with the hospital. The net increase in expenses is 3.15%, or $348,000. Highlights on the admin office, 2024, we had included a service review, which was offset by reserves. We decided to take a different path in 2025, and we have that included in the new. Service delivery includes 2.6% increase in the contract with Headwaters Healthcare, as well as $116,000 for offload nursing. Facilities includes snow clearing increase of about 4,900, grounds maintenance is increase of 5,700, and then, other general maintenance increases of 11,000. Moving on to the proposed additions. The paramedic services master plan will provide a 10-year forecast of what service needs will be and how better to deliver those services. The current contract with Headwaters Healthcare expires this year. Prior to renewal, a consultant will be engaged to review the current model to ensure it continues to meet the needs of the community. It is anticipated that the same consultant will be able to perform that, the work. $100,000 is included, and we're proposing to fund that from rate stabilization, as it is a one-time thing. The next is the additional shift at, in Shelburne. There was a report that went to council in this... Okay, went to November, HHS, that talked about this. Not gonna read all the details, because hopefully, you've looked at that. The proposed cost for 2024 is $201,000, which is offset 50% by subsidy. And I just want to state that this is only for three months, so when it comes to 2026, this will be four times the amount. Any questions? Okay, moving to capital. There's a giant decrease in the Capital Asset Fund in the next couple of years before it quickly goes back up. The capital carryforward of 1.2 is made up of $430,000 of ambulances, which we ordered and haven't received yet. Garage doors of $48,000, security of 70, in-vehicle laptops of $90,000, and exterior wall work of $20,000. This adds up to $658,000. The balance of the 1.2 is, relates to prior year subsidies that we anticipated that the province would claw back, and it's come to fruition that they're not clawing back, so we will be adding it in 2024 to their revenue. Contributions, with the addition of the service in Shelburne, we are able to apply development charges towards an ambulance purchase. The value of work for 2025 is just over $1.6 million. Includes design work for parking lot replacement of $5,000, security work for 120, which is planned for all three stations, garage door replacements of 75, two furnaces and a boiler, $25,000, and work required to rectify ongoing flooding issues of 75,000. We also include a small amount for appliances, which we just kind of keep carrying forward until the actual appliance needs to be replaced. 2025 includes the replacement of two ambulances at $225,000 each. And then, the balance owing on three ambulances that have already been ordered, and we hope to get in 2025 of $430,000, and one community paramedic vehicle of 90. And then, in relation to the new shift, we are proposing the addition of an ambulance, which we are offsetting with development charges. And then, the last is the command vehicle. That also was covered in the report that Gary did, and adding that as a new vehicle for the chief and the deputy chief. Any questions on those?
Counselor Taylor?
I'm just curious, the, outside of the flooding issues that we talked about, what is, what is that building like for long-term? And I don't see, like, we don't have a plan to replace it all the way up to 2044, right? Like, are we still, we're still good there, we're happy, we're... It feels like we're not doing anything with the building necessarily. Any wonder about that?
Gary, would you like to take that one? Happy?
I'm happy. Through you, Warden White, or Warden Horner. That is part of the master plan that we've proposed, is that it would speak to that, whether we need more space. As you know, we're growing. We've already outgrown the current building in... As you know, we're growing. We've already outgrown the current building in Orangeville and have had to find some space for our community paramedics moving forward. So in that master plan, we're hoping that it would identify what our needs would be for over 10 years for the town of Orangeville, and whether that would include another building at another location, or whether we'd be able to actually do an addition at the current space.
If I could, none of that is in here right now, right? Because we don't know what we don't know. So, so this could be magnified significantly. And is it your, you just said you're happy, and it's great that you're happy. I'm glad, I'm happy you're happy. But do you think that building is, are we into something, just out of curiosity?
In regards to the flooding you're speaking of specifically?
Are we going to spend a few million dollars, not a few million, but a lot, a lot of million of dollars of, of a new building? Is that, do you think, do you anticipate that would be part of your plan?
I would expect that there is something that is going to come with that, because we don't have any room really to grow in that area. And with the increase that we're getting in Orangeville and the entire county, we would need, at some point, I would expect within 10 years, that you would see probably another ambulance being needed for the town of Orangeville. And we just really don't have any spot to put it right now.
May I ask a cautious question of you, CIO? I, I ask it cautiously. I'm just curious, was there any changes made to that land size there, or is that status quo? And yes or no would be fine, if that's not appropriate.
Through you, Warden. Nothing to date, but there is potential. Summarizing paramedic services, the status quo operating is 2.92%. When you add in capital, it's 2.42%, and with proposed additions, it's 4.25%. Moving on to public health. Debt payment, we paid off the loan that we had in 2024. It's the big increase in 2020, or decrease in 2025. Service delivery, the annual increase on public health contract is 2.9%. In 2020, in 2013, the county entered into a loan repayment agreement with public health, whereby a credit was applied to our annual costs that offset the additional loan costs. In essence, the credit received equaled the loan payments, and thus, there was no impact on the tax levy. However, in 2024, the budget, the 2024 budget, the credit and the loan costs were not equal, which has resulted in a higher-than-expected increase to public health. Transfers from reserves have been included to lessen the impact over the next few years. And we also do apply a small amount of development charges to the county share of the public health debentures on their buildings. Summarizing public health, the net increase is 3.32%, and that's it for health services. I do.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
One more slide. This is just a summary of where we are at, where we are sitting when we started. And if you go to the next slide, this, with all the things we talked about tonight, we're sitting at 5.16%.
So at this point, Amy, we have a choice. We can approve a budget tonight, or we can return and talk about those areas that have been identified for another time. Is that our choice here? Folks?
If I have some input into this choice, I certainly would not want to finalize this tonight. I think we do have some issues we have to explore further, and it's enough for one day, and we need to have time to think about it.
Counselor McLean?
Yeah, so I would, I would agree with that. The only thing I would say is, 5% is a lot, right? And over the last year, I think inflation in 2024 averaged around 2%. I went back to our 2023 budget, and there's a statement in there that says that historically, our tax levies try to hold true to inflation. And now I know that we've got a lot of big expenses coming up, but now that we've had this wonderful presentation, and I think we all have a better understanding of what's in the budget, I would encourage members of council to think hard about how we can try to get that down, and maybe come to the next meeting with some ideas.
Anyone else? Gail?
If I could ask another question, or, sorry. So we, we've referenced the rate stabilization fund a number of times throughout this presentation, taking reserves from there. So I would certainly like to see what that total is, and I would like to know what we expect to have from our 2024 actuals to, to budget, to know whether we have a surplus or deficit, or what situation we expect to be in.
Counselor White?
Thank you, Warden. Again, trying to be positive. I love Scott. Scott's my, one of my favorite people. And given the economic climate, I think we, we owe it to ourselves to look at a couple of things. The ones we mentioned, sure, but maybe also something like the welcome signs for a couple of reasons. I mean, that's a million dollars over five years, $200,000 a year. But if you really look at it, that is a program that was designed and implemented pre-COVID. We're now way past COVID, so maybe, maybe it's not time to continue rolling that out. Maybe it's time to relook at it and see if we want to take a different direction, or if we want to continue with it, or even push it back a year, or modify it somehow. But I mean, that could certainly go a long way to lowering a bit of the budget as well. So maybe that's just something we have a further discussion about later on. Love you, Scott.
Anyone, and he didn't say but, he didn't. Anyone else? Counselor Post?
This is to Amy. Just briefly, on the last slide, you've said the things that we've discussed are now at 5.16. Is that taking into consideration all of the items that we added to the list, or no?
No. So what that includes, there's a $40,000 change for the household hazardous waste contract, there's $15,000 rent revenue, there's $100,000 for the bike lanes, and then there's 135 for the housing strategy project lead.
So it is, that gets us to 5.16 based on the things that we added to the list tonight?
Yeah, and the other thing I have on the list, sorry, is the investor attraction, attraction, but I don't have an amount.
Counselor Nix?
As important as the housing strategy program may be, I, I still wonder why, and I know we took some out of the $500,000 for the consultant or whatever it was. Is it necessary to put $500,000 into reserves for that program this year? Yes, you're going to tell me we're just building up problems for the future, but, but, okay, I just put it out there, if that's really necessary.
Taylor?
Is there a math on what that budget means to each household? Because I always think that's helpful too, right? Like, is this, is that $32, or whatever it is? I don't, I don't know. But what, what is that as an increase? I'd be curious to understand what that is, and then wouldn't be flippant with residents' money, but it is helpful to understand.
You have that?
Through you, Warden. The increase per thousand dollars, $100,000 of assessment
Counsel, okay. Counsel Krielman, first?
Nearing the fifth, the fifth hour that we've been doing this, I don't know that we're doing our best thinking at this point in the, in the course of the evening. I'd, I'd support going away, considering what we, what we've done, mindful that if we're adding anything to the budget, it should be within the, the amount that is currently recommended, and looking at areas where we can economize by deferring or taking things out. But I don't think we're going to get to a decision tonight.
Just on the, so that was $20 per 100,000 of MPAC assessed value, right? And since MPAC hasn't, we're going on nine years to the, to the point, like, in 2016, I don't know how many houses were a million dollars, for example, but it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's a big difference from what your, your house is worth now. So that just sort of, you know, I guess, sort of lessens the, the impact, because you're working on 2016 assessed values. So thanks.
Through you, Warden, just to James' point about being around CPI. If you look at the status quo budget, it's 3.2%, which is close to CPI. Anything else is new, and it's always going to be over CPI.
Counselor Mills?
Thank you, Warden. I, I agree with several of the other comments that, you know, a, a final decision on this is probably best reserved for another night, but would the intention be to call a special meeting? Like, I, I don't think, we should probably wait until our next regularly scheduled council meeting to get this wrapped up?
We had the 30th, didn't we?
Was, is it already scheduled for the 30th? Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yep, so there is a special meeting already scheduled for January 30?
Seven AM.
Well, and the thing is, you've seen the big presentation. What we should be talking about at that point are some of the economies and some of the specifics, as opposed to the whole thing, right? So, is that a seven o'clock meeting, or is that a three? It's a seven?
Six.
It's a six, okay. It's hard to keep track. Okay, so, thank you, Amy. It appears that we're not ready to make any kind of a motion Well, I wasn't going to send you home, home. It was just, we have no motion on the budget tonight. But I do want, if you have some ideas or questions for staff, please address them to Amy ahead of the meeting, so that she can do some thinking on, on how this might, or she'll direct it to whoever the question has to go to. Counselor Little?
Just as a summary for us, can we get a synopsis, a written synopsis of what those lists was that we created today? Just so that, you know, we're clear, all clear on the same page. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. All right, let's keep moving then. Number 10, there's no strategic plan update this month. We have some correspondence, correspondence received from the municipality of Muskoka to request Dufferin contribute to the funding, the Simco-Dufferin-Muskoka Crime Stoppers. What are counselors' wishes? Counselor Post?
Thank you, Warden Horner. We actually, just in Orangeville, did the proclamation of Crime Stoppers month yesterday or the day before. And I was speaking to the folks who run our division of Crime Stoppers, and they were talking to me about the financial issues that they're having. What I requested, and I sent them the information today, is I requested that they come and delegate to county council to talk to all of us about what their needs are, how it's being funded currently, where their gaps are, and what the future looks like. So I did provide them with our clerk's emails and asked them to reach out to her to ask to delegate at a future meeting.
Perfect. Good. Okay, thank you.
They want the money for 2025, so unless we get this delegation and either say yes or no to some money, how do we get it in the 2025 budget?
Lisa?
Good question. I mean, we could set aside money at the budget time, if that's the will of, of council. The, the correspondence that we got was from one municipality that participates in it, not from Crime Stoppers directly. So I think we'd be better served to hear directly from Crime Stoppers of their need, rather than just from one municipality. The Simco-Dufferin-Muskoka Crime Stoppers do get funding from all three different municipalities, and Muskoka has, has stated to them that they were going to encourage us to also pony out and give some money. But I, I think it, I think it would be premature of us to make a decision on what that dollar amount may look like. What they did tell me from Crime Stoppers this week was, they have put a, a shut their door date of August 1st on the table, because they have to have a plan. They have, they don't want to just last second and say, I don't have any money, we're going to have to close the door. So they have said that they're in danger right now, based on the lack of funding that they do have. So, it's up to council if they want to allocate some money now, but I have asked them to come to, to county council to speak to us.
I think, Counsel Garrett, or Counsel Krieman?
I was going to say, wouldn't it be a community grant, like many other community grants? I mean, we have, we just increased that budget tonight, in theory, anyway.
I did also let them know about the community grants program, both at the county of Dufferin and at the town of Orangeville, and advised them to keep an eye on both the websites for the advertisement of when those applications will open. But in the meantime, I thought it would be good for them to also come to council and just explain what their situation is, as well as to explain to council what the work that they do in our municipality looks like and what their results have been. So I think regardless of the funding piece, I think it's important that they come.
Okay, thank you. I think we'll just wait then, and the clerk will get us, get them on the agenda. Correspondence has been received from Dufferin municipalities regarding the multi-jurisdictional fire protection and prevention plan. Could I please have a mover and a seconder to receive the correspondence for information purposes? Moved by James, seconded by Wade. All those in favor? Carried. Okay, Township of Amaranth, correspondence has been received from the township of Amaranth to support the township of Mulmer's resolution to create a North Dufferin Fire Service Area. Could I have a mover and a seconder to receive the correspondence for information purposes? Moved by Guard House, seconded by Garrett's. All those in favor? Carried. Notices of motion. Counselor Garrett's has submitted a notice of motion. It has been slightly amended from the version published in the agenda, and it will be placed on the February council agenda for discussion. It reads as follows, whereas the County of Dufferin Act received dissent on May 31, 1994, and whereas it would represent good governance for the County of Dufferin Council to review the 30-year-old act to ensure that it meets the current conditions and priorities of the County of Dufferin, therefore be it resolved that county council discuss the County of Dufferin Act at the March County Council meeting to determine which items are no longer relevant or require updating. So that's the notice of motion coming. Is there a closed session? I don't think so. We've had enough. Okay, bylaws, number 15. So we have a recommendation of bylaw 202501 through 200503, inclusive, be read a first, second, and third time and enacted. Need a mover and a seconder? Moved by Nix and seconded by Krielman. All those in favor? Carried. And at the special council meeting on August 22, council received a report regarding the model franchise agreement with Enbridge Gas. At that meeting, council had a first and second reading of bylaw 202432 to authorize execution of the agreement. Since then, the Ontario Energy Board has approved the agreement between Dufferin County and Enbridge, so we may now have a third and final reading of the bylaw. May I have a motion for bylaw 202432 to be read a third time and enacted? Moved by Post, seconded by Garrett's. All those in favor? Carried. Okay. Do any members of council have any other business? Counselor White?
Thanks, Warden. Just wondering if we can get an update on what delegations we have and whatnot, and what we're talking about at Roma, if we have any. and whatnot, and what we're talking about at Roma, if we have any.
Through, through you, Warden. Thanks for the question, Counselor White. Yes, we got two. One through Ministry of Attorney General, which is on Tuesday at?
10:45.
10:45. And another one with the Ministry of Transportation, which is on Monday, and I will get back to you with the time. So actually, before, councilors who are going to Roma, if you, before you leave, if you could maybe just touch base with me and figure out who's going to which delegation, and then we can firm up all those details. And just further to, to answer your question, the Ministry Attorney General delegation is on the stagnation of fees related to traffic infractions or under the Highway Traffic Act, and the non-collection of a number of POA fines over the last many years. Did you want to add anything?
And, and I'm going to add something about illegal land use. Sorry, I'm going to add something about illegal land use and our ineffective process of going to POA court, getting a crummy fine, and then having to go to Superior Court to get compliance. So I'm going to, I'm going to add that in there.
And the Ministry of Transportation delegation is on requesting an update for the study being done on Highway 10, and just general traffic road safety issues with respect to both provincial highways and, and road safety generally, especially on rural roads, referencing the work that was done by the, the Good Roads Association.
Thanks for that. Malankton Township has a delegation with MTO as well on road safety, Highway 10, Kenroad 17, and some other things. So perhaps we could work together just to make sure we're not doing too much duplication on those?
Counselor Mills, I think you've got a delegation as well?
Yes, Warden, as I mentioned to you on, on Monday, we've received a delegation with MTO as well. It's on Monday, I, I think at 2:00 or 2:30. I'm hoping the Warden, if her schedule permits, amongst the multitude of other delegations you'll have that, that week, that you'll be able to join us.
My time is your time. Counselor Garrett?
Did you want, did you want to hear everybody? We have four.
You've got?
So we've got Attorney General for, Counselor, because that's the speed enforcement in rural areas, I think is what we're discussing there. Municipal affairs and housing, can't even remember. Ministry of Infrastructure, it's to abdicate for different designs and standards for structures on low-volume roads. And what's our, what's our other one?
Can you serve?
No, that's the infrastructure. Oh, Minister of Finance, who, it's the parliamentary assistant to talk about, to put it bluntly, treating us as well as they treat the city of Toronto, and, and perhaps allowing for more tools to collect taxes. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anything? Counselor Post?
If you're wanting delegations, the town of Orangeville just has one delegation, and it's with the Ministry of Finance, to talk about the Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund, which we are the only municipality in Dufferin County who does not receive. So we're, we're reaching out to them about that.
The county doesn't, they don't?
That's right. The county as a whole doesn't either, and I, I'll send you some data that I've collected about it, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we are now going to move into the confirmatory bylaw. We have a motion for the confirming bylaw 202504 to be read a first, second, and third time. Moved by Mills, seconded by Hall. All those in favor? Carried. The next committee meetings will be held Thursday, January 3rd, in the Duff Room.
We missed those. I can't quote that.
Thursday, oh, January 23rd?
Yeah. I think you said the 3rd.
Oh, did I? Sorry, 23rd. Infrastructure and environmental services at 9:00, general government services 11:00, community development tourism 1:00, and health and human services 3:00. Then the next meeting will be that January 30th, just get that in your calendar so you don't forget. Our next council meeting will be February 13th at same time, same place. Okay? We have a motion to adjourn.
Oh, Guy.
Oh, Guy, okay, we're carrying on, eh?
Well, I don't know, we have new board, I think we do have a new person.
I'm good with you doing it. Moved by Guy. Second by Garrett's.
I'll move it second.
There you go. Thanks, everyone, that was a long haul, but appreciate your attention.